Good evening. I'm Janet Anderson. I call to order a special Town of Lewisboro Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, November 12th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Materials considered at this meeting are available in the agenda packet posted for this meeting, and members of the public can always express their views by mail or email to planning@lewissborony.gov. Kirsten Conrad, our Planning Board Administrator, has confirmed that the meeting has been duly noticed and legal notice requirements fulfilled. Joining me tonight from the Town of Lewisboro are members of the Planning Board, Paul Fusco, Shalene Adelacato, Bruce Thompson. We do have a quorum, and thus we can conduct the business with the board and vote on any matters that come before us. We also have Council Judge Seibert, Planning Board Administrator Kirsten Conrad. So after the comprehensive plan was adopted, it's good practice to update the zoning code to reflect the current comprehensive plan. The Town Board referred a package of code changes to the Planning Board, to us, at their meeting on October 28th, and they have set a public hearing on these changes for December 9th, 2024. So with that, we have a series of chapters that we can consider, but my first question, I think, Jed, was going to be, there's, as we went through this, I think there's a lot of things that are just typos, like periods, or if you're gonna, you know, instead of, like it says, we're gonna add a chapter that already exists instead of amend it, so it should say amend, and there's, you know, so there's typos. Are those things that we could kind of give to you to do, and we can ignore that, and then we should just?
Yeah. Let's talk about substance.
Substance, okay.
Certainly anything that's, anything that's of that kind of typographical, or even, I won't say cosmetic, but that, you know, that kind of stuff, get to me and we'll...
Okay. So in the, I think I sent it to you, in the, in the things that I did, there's like these little yellow bullets on the side?
Yeah.
Which you have to click on in order to see what it says.
Yeah, I, I ran, I, I just brought hard copies tonight, but for example, like, this was an, this was the add chapter, you, you click it and I see what you're getting to.
Right. So even, or you could give it, I know there's someone else who worked in your office who worked on it?
Yeah.
And there's just, there's a lot of that, so that's great. So I thought the big items that we might want to discuss were 217 and 220, wetlands and then the zoning code. Yeah, unless anybody has another?
I have a couple of questions. One question on one, chapter 115.
115? Okay.
And it's on B, on the waiver.
Okay.
And what is the extent of the waiver by the building inspector, and how would we know? Do we get any information if it's solely within his discretion?
So I did have some on this one. Okay. So do you know what page, where is that?
It's B, so...
B.
Section...
114.
You're on 115.
B.
I'm on 115B waiver.
Yeah, page four of the local law.
I see it. It is page four, waiver requirements.
Right. The building inspector may waive.
Which, where are you in 115? What was it?
B waiver.
B waiver, okay.
It's on page four.
Yeah, 115-4B.
Mm-hmm.
Right. I think the idea was to, you know, give the building department, you know, that we way in terms, you know, if you have a, if you have a, you know...
There's no parameters, I think that's the only issue.
Yeah, yeah. So I can flag that and take a look at it.
Okay.
So we're looking for, you'd be looking for parameters, right?
Yeah.
You wanna, yeah, you wanna hem in that discretion a little bit.
Right, because it seems like, you know, like it's his discretion and then we know nothing about him.
Yeah, okay.
Don't you?
Yeah, I, I, that's good. I didn't pick that one up on my own, but I'll add it again. Okay, so I did have a few on this one. Let me see if I can get any. Oh, just a typo.
Yeah, you had a typo. Oh, you noted the definition of what, natural water courses?
Oh, yes. I, there were two. One is sort of, so this excavation and fill. On C1, where they say, "Any filling or grading should have been issued, limited in area and bulk to that strictly essential for foundation walls, building, sidewalk, swimming pool." So I was thinking about Hidden Point Pool, which is 875,000 gallons, you know, the third largest pool in the, in the U.S., at least at the time it was built. And I was wondering if we should have a maximum there, or something that says, you know, given that it's less than 10,000 square feet, or something. I mean, and because it's not so much that I'm worried about the pool, it's that somebody could come in with a really huge project and it would, could fit, you know, the basement of a building, service connection, swimming pool, underground, it could be, and yet it could be really huge.
Yeah.
So I thought some kind of limit on, on size might be appropriate.
Okay. But dimensional or size?
Right. I mean, and again, they could get a variance from the zoning board, but at least they'd have to have, the hidden, hidden pools, hidden farm pools will haunt me forever. Okay.
But isn't this for a fill permit, a fill and excavation permit, right?
Right, so it's in, but it says it's exempt, so it means it would never need one.
Right, but wouldn't the pool need the permit? So you would know the fill, you would know the amount of work being done?
You don't, my understanding is there's not a need for, if you just wanna, if you have a piece of property, it's not anywhere near wetlands or anything, and you just want to put a pool on, you just need basically a building permit.
That was the issue with Hidden Point. I mean, we wouldn't have seen that application if it were not for basically a wetland permit they needed for, for construction.
Yeah, they'd need to cross this thing. So, so a lot of things don't come before us, and I'm saying, here's the chance to keep, to get a size limitation. If somebody wants to do, I don't know, an underground parking garage that is, you know, that is otherwise allowed because it's all underground and it's, you know, it's excavation, so I, it feels a little bit like shutting the barn door after the horse is gone, but I also think it, it's good to have in there if we don't learn.
Yeah, I don't think it hurts. I mean, there could be a limit to any of it. It doesn't hurt. I'm sure there are, I mean, like, the concern, I'm sure there are other ways that it would fall, like between SWIPs and things like that, that large projects will naturally fall into at least some regulation, but not become into a board, so it probably doesn't hurt. At least you have two balancing axes, yeah, okay. I can see that.
Yeah. I mean, we didn't, in the, in this other one, like, like we said, the only reason we even knew about it was this, it, they crossed this little wetland to get there, and it really limited what we could say. And I know Joe was the building inspector, then Joe Angiello.
Angiello.
Angiello. And he was concerned, and there really wasn't...
Much he could do.
Much he could really do, except go out and try to make sure they were building according to plans, but, okay. The other one, a little further down there, also on page two, it says lawns and gardens.
I'm sorry, just, are we giving a number, or you have a reference, or?
Well, I, I just put, speak with Jan. I'd like to get Jan sent put on, but I would certainly raise it with the Town Board that we think this would be appropriate for some sort of ceiling or...
Yeah, and I, and maybe, I don't know what it would be, 10,000 square, I mean, I don't...
Be some yardage, yeah, but like, some cubic yards of fill or material or something, I don't know. Yeah, Jan would have, I'm sure there are limits within the state, you know, the state code that I just don't know, so even though I'm better than that. That's great.
And then down in five, at five, I think it's a good statement. You should be able to put, you know, topsoil fertilizer to lawns and gardens and gravel and all that stuff. I think the only thing we should sort of say, as long as it does not maybe add to the back of that, provided that they do not further extend into wetland areas. You know, so you're...
Which one are you on now?
I'm still on...
B? The waiver?
No.
Or C, five?
No, we're on page two.
On page, it's, it's on the...
Page two?
Yeah.
It's on exempt activities.
Exempt activities. 115 to C5, and it's labeled lawns and gardens.
Here, actually.
It's on page two. What page is it?
Two.
Yep. I have a copy of all this stuff here, because I took it when I was at the voting thing. So here, if you want to look on, in here, there, now they're not all in the right order, but...
Thanks.
Anyway, fine with me.
Okay.
Okay.
Which one are we here now? This is the...
This is 115? 115?
Yeah. So then...
220.
So what's your suggestion? That's often, I don't have it, but you flagged it, right?
Yes. What I was suggesting, saying something about, you know, shall not be construed as prohibiting and limiting the normal addition, you know, or the addition of gravel, and just something about provided, you know, there's no further extension into wetland areas. So I should probably ask a procedural thing here. Are you taking this and are gonna draft the letter for us?
Yeah.
Yay! Yeah.
So with that said, shouldn't we have any filling in a wetland area? I mean, I guess that probably falls under the wetland chapter, right? Because we have a whole section in the wetland chapter that talks about it.
But keep in mind, we have a separate wetland chapter.
Yeah, yeah.
This is exempt.
So that makes sense.
Oh, so you think maybe that isn't needed for that?
Yeah, I mean, in other words, anything that is going to be within a wetland or a wetland reg, wetland regulated buffer is gonna trigger 217.
Okay. Yeah, as long as people...
As long as people recognize that that's the case, but they have to fill out the questionnaire when they come in.
Um, yeah, I think there was something that said, well, there was something, okay. So then, the next question I had on 115 is a little further down, page three.
Sorry, wait, just before you get that, so to, to your point on that, does it make sense in either the general provisions or the prohibited operations of just noting in accordance with section?
Maybe that's, yeah, compliance with...
Yeah, chapter, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, just to reiterate it. I know what I'm, yeah, like, looking for code.
So let's, so applicability, that would be up under general provisions. Maybe we put a fourth thing under general provisions, which is 115-2A on page, the top of page two, and say for, you know, well, it says...
Well, what if we, what if we added it to A1? In other words, no permit shall be issued unless, by the building, unless an application and site plan is first, been first approved by the planning board, you know, and/or a wetland permit as required, or something like that, flag it there.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, although that's saying it's a permit, and we're talking about exempt activities down here, and so, but it does sort of say, they're up there, that other rules, all other, like, that's what I was saying, number three, it says it has to...
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's right, it says three, yeah.
It's three. It kind of, you know, so if you say...
Shall be performed in accordance...
...all applicable state, county, federal, and local laws, rules, and regulations, including the wetlands.
Yeah. Can do that.
Yeah, and that just highlights it, that it's...
Yeah, it's kind of true, you know, someone's gonna forget no matter what, but at least it's there. I mean, it doesn't have to be, right, you're saying, it's kind of...
No, no. I mean, we should, it is hard when you start reading codes to know that, oh, I have to look in this chapter and that chapter, yeah. Okay. So then, under application procedure, 115-4A, there's natural water courses. So I don't know what that is. I, I assume they want to say, okay, we, we don't count catch bases and stuff like that, but there's, so something like Lake Tona, Lake Truesdale, they're all, they're all dammed, they're not...
They're not natural.
They're not necessarily natural, unless we define them as natural. So I don't know why we, I think we could take out natural?
Yeah, and just say water bodies.
Water courses?
Water.
Or water courses?
Which section are you on now?
Okay, so this is 115-4, and it's the top of, or sort of in top third of page three.
Water courses and water bodies?
Yeah, water courses and water bodies. And that's sort of repeated. This whole thing about natural water courses or wetlands, you know, is repeated quite a bit, and that, that...
In...
So that's, it's in one, it's in six.
Yeah.
So just saying water courses or wetlands?
Yeah, I mean, I...
Yeah, I get that, because then if someone's gonna argue, the word natural, yeah?
Right.
Absolutely. There's no reason for it, natural.
An expedition, okay.
There's no, yeah, there, I get that.
Yeah, I mean...
Water courses, water bodies, wetlands.
Yeah.
Yeah. Water courses or wetlands, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, I, I, sometimes we say water bodies, wetlands, water courses, I, you know, but I just think getting rid of the natural is...
Yeah, I think so too, but I think that it should be the three of them because they really do mean different things.
Okay, so Jed, that's also?
Water courses, water bodies, and wetlands.
Right.
Don't, do we define all three of those in this code to begin with, in definitions? I don't, I have...
I think in two and seven, we might, but...
Yeah, no, it's not here.
Not here.
No.
As long as it's somewhere.
Right, but that's where I was, I was looking, I looked for natural and I couldn't find it, and...
The only thing with water bodies, does then, like a pool, because that's, that shouldn't be...
A swimming pool?
Yeah, because that's a water body.
Yeah, I think that's...
Right, but I'm just saying, if we're defining...
No, I think that's a swimming pool. I think it would be defined as a swimming pool.
Or even if somebody has a koi pond. I mean, I think that's, that's probably what they're trying to avoid, is the, I've got a catch basin that goes in a pipe, you know? Yeah, okay, we don't mean that, but I, I don't think, I don't think most people would, would say that's a water course.
Oh, perfect. I just...
I hope. Well...
Well, worst case scenario, you'd get it, and then you'd be able to say, no, it's not, it's in there.
In number seven, I mean, I think maybe we should just ask, and that's also on page three, just ask, the, you have to know about wells within two, or no. You have to know about wells within 150 feet, but you only need to know about, you know, septic systems within 50 feet. I just don't, I guess a well is more sensitive, but that one, I was almost saying, maybe 100 feet?
Well, isn't, I thought the Board of Health had a requirement saying that you can't do construction, you can't do foundations within 25 feet of your fields, and within 10 feet of your tank.
Of your tank.
So what, what is this 50 feet here, the, I'm reading? The location of any sewage just falls, any part of which is within 50 feet of the proposed disturbed area.
What this is, is to put it on the plans, so if you, if you submit a plan, you should show anything that's within 50 feet. And, I don't know.
Okay, okay.
Well, I think, because...
So just to show it?
So less would be, anything within 50 feet of the disturbance area is what you're saying?
Yeah, and I was wondering if we should show septic systems that are within, I don't know, 100 feet, but I, I, I think we, I would like to hear from Jan on that.
I think 50 feet, Bruce, is because downhill of a septic system, or uphill of a septic system, you can be 50 feet. Downhill, I think you're 25. You can't, like, it's the opposite of this definition, right? We're looking at it in the reverse of, for construction, if you're above it, you can be within 25 feet of a field, but if you're below it, you have to be 50 feet away.
I, there's some...
Yeah, so that might be why this is 50, I'm just thinking.
Right.
I don't know.
Jan?
But yeah, Jan will know.
Yeah. Okay. That's all I had for 115. Did you have anything more? I think that call about parameters is a good one, though, to have that.
And we talked about this once before, the threshold for a permit here is 15 yards in quantity. A permit issued by the, it should be clarified, the grade and the step, which hereby defined as an inantilling excavation, will be distributed, the services of topsoil. 15 yards of material is, is very small, and you're gonna cross that threshold in, in no time at all.
All right, I'm looking for that.
That's like, right in the beginning, it's the first, it's the first, it's like general provisions, yeah.
115-2A1.
Yeah, I agree with you, Bruce, on that, that, that volume. There are a lot of exemptions, though, that...
Yeah, that's what I, oh, yeah, there it is. 15 cubic yards, I, that's like a decent sized dump truck, right?
It's half the size of like a typical dump truck. Well, maybe not, like three quarters.
So did we, I thought at one time we were talking, way back, months ago, is there, are there some exclusions here?
Yeah.
In other words, okay, so for instance, your gravel for your footing grades, that's not, that's excluded.
That's excluded.
Okay. And the same...
Anything to do with a foundation is excluded.
Okay.
And, yeah, go ahead, I'm here, I want to hear the exemption, but...
Anything to do with the foundation is excluded.
Any major structure, there's a pool, foundation, it was one of those, wow. So most major construction is exempt from a separate fill permit, because it's getting another building permit.
Because, yeah. So...
So this would be like, if you wanted to grade your lawn, but you're not building any structures, once you cross 15 yards, you would need a permit.
If you're...
Except if you had an acre worth of lawn, you could spread topsoil over the whole thing.
Yeah.
That's an exemption.
And that's exempted, right? So if you're redoing your driveway, it's an exempt. If you're building a wall, you know, if you're, so I think there's a lot of exemptions in there, and I think that's, I think we try it. Now, is that the kind of thing that a ZBA could give? Because that's, that's...
I wrote down...
That's not aerial.
When you mentioned before about adding a dimensional requirement on the exemption, and you said they could go to, I wrote variance because this would not be, that we need some sort of, we need some sort of a, an appeal vehicle in there. Maybe we can say they go to the ZBA, but the ZBA is only empowered to hear appeals relating to the zoning code.
Ah, that's right. So maybe it comes to us as a...
Or the planning board, yeah.
Yeah, could come to us. I'm, I'm, because typically, it's the kind of thing I think we worry a little bit more about anyhow.
Yeah.
So if we put an aerial requirement in, then especially like for this big swimming pool, or a big something, then you'd say, then you...
Unless waived upon application of the plan, or, you know, unless a variance is, an exception is granted, something applied by the...
By the planning board. And then if they showed it to us and we said, yeah, that looks good, but it's a, it would basically be a site plan that they would show us, so that makes, okay.
But to Bruce's point, yeah, 15 yards is really small, and then we don't put a, like a time limit? So could they do 15 yards, and then 15 yards?
Every day.
Yeah.
No, we say something about, oh, only if they bring in a permit, they have to tell us what they've done in the prior year. I think it's in here.
Right. Like SWIPs, right? Any disturbance within a calendar year over, and, you know, like, because you could, yeah, you can just keep going and fall under exemptions.
But I think, I think, in some ways, I think this is to really, I guess somebody could do a little bit...
And then over time, it would...
Yeah, I mean, there are a lot of things, like, can't go into wetlands, you can't do all these things, you know, there are a lot of ways to stop the activity. And I don't know if it's necessary, I'm just...
Yeah.
Janet, what's the, the threshold for the size of the, Lewisboro has a very tight, if the addition is more than something like 700 square feet, you have to go to get a variance. What was it, like, if you, what was that, detached garage? Maybe that was it, I can't remember, but there was something.
So if you make an addition to your home, which is more than 1,000 square feet, or doubling the size of a house, you have to go to the Department of Health. If you, I think the outside building, if you want to put up a, a new structure, I want to say, a new structure over, I think it's over 600 square feet.
Yes, yes, yeah, I remember, it's 20 by 30.
Right.
Right.
But, but you have a right to put up an accessory home structure. So that, so if somebody wants to say, I want to build a, a place for my, I don't know, my gardener, or my mother-in-law, or whatever, you know, you, I don't mean to equate them, but, but I think that you have a right to put that up, and there is a, I think that might be bigger, I think that might be like 1,200 square feet, or it, it's, whether it's a foot, it might, it might still need the 600 square foot footprint, but I think you could do multiple stories.
Yes, right.
And have some limit there, so...
My, my, my point being that when you start to get, your, your structure's increasing in size, the material that you're moving around is, is also going up. So if there's any way you could say that, okay, this is what it is...
Well, anything that has anything to do with a foundation or a building is, you know, a new building or anything is exempt.
Okay.
So I think...
But if it gets a permit?
No.
But doesn't it say it as, am I, I'm sorry, I closed up. I thought it read it as, if it has a...
Yeah. Exempt activities. Any filling, grading, sorry, here it is.
Yeah, where building permits shall be doing that issue.
That's a building permit.
Right, but you're saying you don't need a building permit for that, or you need a building permit, you just don't need to go to any planning board?
You don't need to come to the planning board.
I'm sorry.
You need, you need a building permit to cough.
Yeah, okay.
It's a, you know...
No, 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 I, okay.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else on 115? Close, cut down. Yes. Um, did, you want to go, did you go through these in order? You want to go to steep slopes?
No, I, I have something on 191.
Well, 187 is next, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Oh, that's, that's a nip. Oh, and one of the things, oh, that is not worth talking about. So, on page, on 187, on page six, about the middle of the page, you know, it has approving authorities, and they say, except as noted above, the town engineer shall be the approving authority for all steep slope permit applications. And I wanted to make sure that if the town engineer felt it was necessary to, to sort of call upon the planning board to look at something, that they had the ability to do that. Cause, I mean, and, we just had something that's a wetland permit, that was, sort of fits the administrative code, but it's coming to us because Jan wants us to look at it. So, I think that's a small thing, but if a town engineer says, I mean, the number of cases this is gonna happen is probably once every 10 years, but.
So, you want to give them discretion?
I want to give them the discretion to say.
Yeah. Require application.
To kick it back, basically.
Right, well.
Or not back, but to give it to us.
To give it to us. To say, I think this needs another set of eyes. And then, this is another, sort of in the typo thing, but I think the approving authority is listed as the town engineer, and then, partway through, it sort of switches to the building inspector. And I think they mean to have town engineer throughout.
Yeah.
Again, that's on the border of kind of being a comment, but I think it's really a typo.
Yeah, but.
Now, in here, again, on the very top, I didn't write it, but it says to add chapter 191, but then it says to amend chapter 191. I think we have, so I think it's to amend.
Oh, are we, we're done with 170?
Yeah, 187, yeah, I think so. You'll miss?
Yeah, no, I think.
Yep. Okay, so, on the top of 191?
Yeah.
It says add on the big type, and then on the right, it says amend.
No, we, yeah, that's a typo, it was to add Article 3.
So, I think if you say amend, you've got it.
Yeah, well, no, it just, yeah, it's, even the title should say to amend.
Yeah. It's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, but.
No, that's.
I'm.
I have 191.
I think some, you don't have it?
It's not in this, I haven't seen this.
Some of them might be stuck together, you might have to.
Yeah, and that's it, right.
Okay. So, at the bottom of page one on that, so, snow or ice to be positive manner that impedes pedestrian vehicle or access to the town superintendent, and that doesn't, there's something missing.
Yeah.
Should be, or access to a public right of way.
Yeah, it's probably the public right of way.
It's access to the town superintendent's.
Yeah. No, I think, I think the thing that is supposed to be is the public right of way, but.
Something.
You see where we're at?
Yeah.
And, and again, I think that's not in the thing of what we have to tell anybody. And that's all I had.
Well, I, I have something.
Oh, yes, good.
On, on C. Now, normally, I don't, I'm not that nice, but here, is the superintendent may notify the properties of, within a period of 30 days from the date of said notice, the town will affect such repairs. Now, first of all, it's not gonna happen within 30 days.
Right.
And then, shouldn't there be a notification?
Okay.
Another, they notify, it's like, may notify.
They shall.
Not, shall notify.
Right.
And, I think the, the 30 days, I think, has to be sort of a little looser in the sense that they have to notify the town of what will be done within 30 days.
Oh, right.
Because of getting contractor, you know.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if there's.
It's like a yellowstone injunction. Yeah, like, we're gonna, yeah, we're, we need time to get it done.
Right, right, you know, we want to get it done, but, you know, it's not gonna happen within 30 days.
Yeah.
Well, if, if it's something like a tree fell on it, or a, you know, or you've got snow in front.
No, this is, this is for maintenance clear, yeah.
Clearing of obstruction, so, that's.
Yeah, I, I still think it's shall notify.
Shall notify, yep.
And I, I just wrote yellow stuff language. Pick up the concept, Charlie, cause I think it's, in other words, if it's something that is so, you don't want to put somebody in a jam, if it's something that's gonna take longer than 30 days.
Right, and even with a tree, sometimes they can't get anybody to move the tree.
Yeah, but, you know, on the other hand, if it's snowed, and you haven't shoveled your sidewalk, I don't want to give you 30 days to shovel your sidewalk, so.
Well, I think, yeah, maybe that, because anyhow, the 30 days, it's, the snow is gonna melt.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so.
So, maybe there should be a differentiation between snow and other maintenance, maintenance issues.
Well.
This sidewalk is on town property, it's on, you know, it's on town property, correct?
But we're trying to get.
It should probably be notifying, getting some, a reading from the insurance company to say, what, you know, what, what is the insurance?
Well, I, yeah, I know, but we're just talking about how many days in between, that's why it's like 30 days, and then, you haven't the insurance, people haven't come back.
So, we could say something about, in the case of snow or public danger, or some, you know, in the, in the case of public danger.
Right.
The town may take, may take immediate actions, or more, you know, may take prompt action. Because, again, you've got a, if you've got a tree branch hanging over a.
You want, you want both sides.
You want safety.
You want safety, but you want the leeway that you're not.
Right.
Well, do you, is it better that we give the superintendent the choice? So, like, if you get approval, like, it could be a written approval from the superintendent saying, yes, it's gonna take you 90 days, you know, like.
That, that's, that's a lot of paperwork and.
I think, I think, I think if we say, at the discretion of the superintendent of highways, if there's a public safety issue, they may take more, you know, may take prompt action.
May take immediate action. And the 30 days is, then, if, if they're not taking immediate action in the 30 days, they have to notify the highway superintendent of what they're doing.
Of their plans to.
Of their plans.
To remediate.
Because you really have to give on both ends.
Right, right. I mean, if it is something that's, okay, so, for example, we could even say, if you've got Mercedes-Benz is currently building stuff, and they've got, the sidewalks are a mess, well, you know, yeah, they, they're not gonna be 30 days.
And also.
Part of a site plan, of course.
Yeah. Also, I guess it would be if, if it's immediate action, no notifications necessarily are there.
Yeah, right, yeah.
See what happens if you get a team working at this stuff?
You're like, I just think, are we really reading this?
I remember somebody once told me, nobody ever reads the zoning code, and I was like, well, okay.
Okay, that's all I had.
I think chapter 195, I don't think I had anything that's like, except the, again, it's an amendment, not an ad.
I have on 19517, I'm sorry.
Page seven, no, okay, 17.
Section 17.
Oh, there it is. Yeah, oh, I don't know, this is another thing.
Well, I just, I just, do we get to vote on the modification? You know, I don't know.
On the, on the change, well, the, the other thing, I have in there, so, I always think if you say chairperson, if it's a man that's gonna be a chairman, and if it's a woman, it's gonna be a chairperson, and I would just prefer chair, but that's, that's not.
Yeah, that I.
That's not in the big thing. All right, where am I?
This is 17.
17 what?
Section.
This is all the security.
F.
F. So, that's at the bottom of page three.
Modification at any time, I would be, it's just.
I'm sorry, where, where?
Here, we're on X, page three.
Yeah, okay.
Bottom.
Of 191?
Uh, 195, I believe.
Yeah, 195, okay.
Well, this says the board may modify.
Right, based upon the report of the town, and make necessary modify, the board may modify the conditions as, so as to require. But how are we going to get that? Is that based on report? And do we have to vote on the modifications?
I think we do have to vote, we do have to vote on it, but I think it's based on a report from the town engineer. So, this is basically, the town engineer coming in and saying, you know, this is not gonna work the way you approved it.
But how much of a modification? Cause I know we've said okay to stuff without a vote, so how much of a modification requires a vote?
Yeah, I think this is, yeah, this gets into that whole sort of field change.
Yeah.
Once you're out, you're building, yeah.
Right, and, and, cause I've seen field changes that have been made, and we okayed it, you know, like, we knew about it, and it was fine.
Right.
And we didn't vote on it. But here, it's, you know, the approval now, is it written approval, voting approval? That's, well, my question.
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
I mean, in some ways, it's nice to have it sort of loosey, so you can do it, but, but, but it's not good practice, I don't think.
I don't know how to fix it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah.
I just, it's sort of like.
How's it being? I don't know.
Okay. I'm sorry, so, it's determined, so, you get a report from the town engineer, and it's determined by the planning board that you have to do it, so, they may modify. So, the question, I think, is, are there any parameters here? Is it a vote that we, you know, is this a new resolution? Is this a?
Because when you say approval by the board, it meant all of us.
Yeah.
And we can't approve unless we vote. But there are field changes that are made that I don't, you know, like.
Well, we could.
We could know it, but, you know.
We could approve by consensus.
I prefer, yeah, it's almost, to me, this kind of modification really rises to the level of something that's significantly different than what's approved, right?
Right, but, but there's no language.
It's all, I don't know, it's necessarily gonna be the, it's gonna be more of a plan approval, in other words, you know, plan design approval as opposed to the condition of approval, I mean, other than, you know, your condition of approval recites, you know, all the plan sets.
Okay, determined by the planning, but based upon a report from the town engineer.
And it says, in the spirit and intent, so instead of saying of the board, can it say of the engineer, the town engineer, or building?
Such, such approval can be done by consensus, has that.
Or, why don't we just say, why don't we just say that the modified plan shall be presented for, you know, for approved by the board? I, I think we should just, I, I think you're gonna want to do that by motion and have it placed into the file.
Okay.
As this is the revised plan.
But even with the, with the small modification?
No, I don't think the small modifications need to come to you, I think that's.
But they do.
Yeah.
No, this is really a report by the town engineer, so we didn't, so, for example, an awful lot of the things that we saw from Mercedes-Benz were because they were, I mean, when they came back in, they were big changes and big variances. But before that, before that, they had done some things like, I think, changed something on the sidewalk.
Right, right.
Plantings or something, and that wasn't, that didn't come to us. So, I think it's, you know, this is based on, it says, based on a report from the town engineer, yeah, so I think this should be, and especially because this goes into the performance security thing, if we're gonna change the performance security, we ought to have a, something that changes the.
Changes the plan, yeah.
Okay, so then, approval, approval is by, by vote.
The, yeah, should be presented to the board for approval.
I just want to look at that language, just to, I, I think we need something in there to recognize that the town engineer's gonna make that initial call.
Yeah, okay, great, great.
If the town engineer determines, you know, that.
So, the question is, how do we modify it?
Well, would it be, would it be the town engineer or building inspector? Because sometimes the town engineer isn't inspecting until the end.
And, modification.
Really, like, a lot of permits, they're not out there, depending on what it, what, what the scale of the project is, they won't be until the end, and then it's built.
Well, this is, yeah, this is a subdivision. Well.
I'm just, I'm not sure if it should be both for them, or both people.
So, it could be, so what I think Paul is saying is, it could be based on a report from the town engineer or the building inspector.
Just either one, right?
Yes.
Right.
They would be the one doing typical or regular.
Okay, also, in section three.
Section which?
Section three.
Up above then?
Yeah. It's performance security.
Oh, I sort of.
By the town board and the town attorney. Why is this, in, in some places, it's really sort of acceptable by the town board, or town official, or consultant, why is this specifically for the town attorney? It's different from other performance.
Which, let me see where we, where, where am?
This is page two.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Sort of in the middle of page two.
Performance security.
Performance security.
And the last sentence says, it's town board and town attorney. I think when we were talking about all this, I remember with Valerie, there was a lot of, I, I was kind of saying, should that be the planning, you know?
Well, yeah.
And, and there's a lot that really does belong to the town board.
Well, the thing is, with regard to subdivision security, town, New York State Town 1277, well, it requires that, that the bond be accepted by the town board, cause the bond technically is, I mean, the purpose of the bond is, is to ensure completion of public improvements that.
Okay.
So, that's really, because it affects a town interest, the town board should be overseeing that, or.
Yeah, I mean, all of them say the town board, but then they say.
They say, and town attorney, I don't recall why that was added.
And, and, if we possibly say, you know, at the recommendation of the, of the planning board consultant, I mean, I'd rather that, because the town attorney knows nothing about what they're doing.
Yeah, I, I can strike, because, by the town board, the town board's not gonna do anything without talking to the town attorney.
Right, right.
And also, you know, I, I, why put it on the town attorney?
Right.
When he knows nothing about it, and it's called, I mean, it seems like.
Yeah.
And all the other places say town board or town. And all the other places say town board or town official.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
Okay. And this, but to make you more comfortable with it, it does say, "As specified in the resolution of the town, of the planning board," so we're obviously making a recommendation on that.
But it's like one extra step that's.
Yeah, it's like, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
He has to sign off on it, too.
Okay, anything else in, whatever it is, 195?
No.
Going once, going twice? Okay. 195, no, wetlands.
Ah. Something close to your heart.
Yes. Okay, so, again, at the very top, that's an amend, not a.
I don't know, that, I, I'll tell you, I think that was a, something happened. Some sort of glitch.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know why, yeah.
But this is one of those things, that's where I sort of asked, I don't think we have to tell the town board, "Oh, this is our recommendation." That's just a typo, go.
Yeah, yeah.
You do have amend on 220, so that's, I think, but anyway, we'll get there. Okay, I think my first. Wow, where is it? Okay. So in the definitions, at the top of page 16. And there's, there might be a real reason for this, but we say, "Refer to Appendix A for the technical criteria for wetland identification." It's not so much Appendix A I worry about, it's Appendix B, which is where the guidelines for mitigation include the one-to-one reference. So if somebody is reading our code, they never, they never see the one-to-one until you get, until, unless you happen to look at an appendix. So I, I don't under, I'm wondering if we could, instead of putting it there in Appendix A, have somewhere in here the, "Okay, this is what the criteria for wetland identification is," and add it as another.
Subchapter.
Yeah, section, another something that basically says that. And then when we get to mitigation, add that as another section and say, "Here's this, and by the way, one-to-one is not hidden in the appendix."
Absolutely, yeah, I agree with you completely.
I just think it's hard enough to read any, any code without having to look for appendices.
All right, so let's, let's start with the, with the wetland definition now. So.
Right.
Your suggestion is to take the appendix and just fold it into the text?
Yes. It's like a two, maybe three-page definition. It's not really written in local code format, which might be why it's out as an appendix. But, you know, let's get it right. And I didn't try to identify exactly where it went, where it would go, but it would be.
Well, I think it would have to be part of the definition.
I don't know, it might be, just like there's.
Or you could say.
Under applicability, it could be, here's the def, or, you know, I don't know where it would be, you know? I don't know if I have internet and can pull it up, I didn't. Oh, yeah.
There are a couple towns that, that define it, I think, North Castle does. And another one I just did, that, that has it in the text of what to define, a well, or how to define one.
I mean, we could, I mean, you could, if you're worried about kind of dumbing up the, the flow of the definition, you know, the, the section of definitions, we could just drop a section in below and say, instead of saying appendix, say C-section, X, Y, and Z.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm really thinking.
And drop it in somewhere, it's just, yeah.
So it's a, I just pulled it up, it's a. Yeah, it's a four-page, um, section, but I think it could just go into a section. And it's.
Maybe under, maybe we fold, I mean, just as a place to park it, we put it in the, in 217-3, right?
Let me pull it up, that up again. Yeah.
Yeah, applicability.
This should be all defined as wetlands.
Yeah.
And then you say, you know, A1, wetlands.
Yeah, probably A1, yeah.
And then you're saying we would do the same.
Yes.
With regard to the, like, mitigation or mitigation plan?
Yeah, so, um, let me get down to where that is.
Well, so, I'm sorry, just with regards to this, yeah, the definition for, so then it does change a little bit how A and B are written?
Yes, it would cha, it would have to really change it a little bit, but instead of a set forth in 7, 217-2, it would be as set forth below.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, whatever it is, okay, yeah. Sorry, you were saying the mitigation or where to put it?
No, no, and then the same thing about, I mean, so if, if, so that might be something to ask Jan, whether there's a reason why it's in an appendix? But, but if, if it's not some, you know, technical reason that it has to be in appendix, I think we would actually look at this and come back, and we'd probably have to have a second go-through once it got read. Yeah, so, um, some typos, but before we get. At the to, at the top of page 18. Again, this might be legal and may further defer the making, I think it's really refer, but. That's kind of, you know, that's, you can bring it up to.
Yeah, that should be refer.
Okay, that's, if it's just a typo, it's okay, but if it's something else, then. And then at the top of 19 is when I start. Not being sure why. So we have prohibited in the past chemical storage facilities or bulk petroleum storage tanks within a wetland water course or buffer area. I, if you want to be able to put it into a buffer area, I might be able to live with it, but it sure seems to me like it should not be in a, these things should not be in a wetland or water course. So I don't know. I don't know whether this was, again, something that somebody had a case that they said, "Oh, I want to," but it just doesn't make any sense to me. If we're prohibiting paddocks and pastures within a wetland, I don't see why you would put chemical tanks. I, I, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm berating it, but that's, that's one. If somebody said it has to go into a buffer area, maybe I would be okay with that being, but I don't understand why that's going there.
I don't remember being taken out, actually.
I.
I don't remember any discussion on.
I don't remember any discussion, I don't, it just kind of.
Yeah, it just, just seems to.
Right. I'm okay, I, the, this next thing on ground maintenance.
Well, you have a note here about that.
On my, oh, yeah, some of my handwriting might be impossible to read. So then when you get to B1, "Normal ground maintenance of landscape areas and residential gardens within," that's all right, never mind, I'll, we'll live with that.
Yeah, I think we discussed it and.
Yeah, yeah. We talked to people about, I'm going now to number nine, which is on page 20. And that was, if you draw down a swimming pool, I'm wondering, or, it says, it says here, "It's okay to do normal maintenance and repair of existing swimming pools." The only thing I want to, or wonder if we should worry about is saying, "Something like appropriate care should be taken to, on chemically treated or saltwater pool during, during removal." You know, I, if, if you dump chlorinated water or saltwater into a catch basin that runs to a, well, the chlorination would probably go away pretty fast, but the saltwater wouldn't. So I'm wondering if there should be some kind of.
Well, I wouldn't worry about the salt versus the chlorine, they're the same thing. But the, the pools are regulated, and they're supposed to go a drainage system, that's part of permits. So if it is being discharged, that would be like a complaint scenario. You know what I mean? Like, I don't think we could define a particular use.
All right.
Right? Because like, they're sup, all drawdowns, I mean, that's part of all the permits, right? They have to go managed into the drainage system.
Into a drainage system, right.
Yeah, so like, when you see hoses dropping down, you know, we just went through that, through this whole season, where they're dropping down the driveway, that, that's a violation.
Right.
So I don't know if we can men, I don't know if it makes.
So let's, let's ignore that one, and I'll go down to the, the number 11. "Appears to and testing maintenance of a dry hydrant by a fire district." And I think based on, again, what we saw was somebody trying to dredge it and said, "Oh, that's just maintenance." I think we should probably say, "However maintenance requires dredging, that becomes a regulated activity." That's a sentence to add.
The only thing with, with the one before, is they have the tennis courts on there.
Page 7, Jen, 20, 20, page 20?
Yeah.
Page 20, page 20, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, just because they have the tennis courts with the pool that you were saying, like, if they are, if it's like a clay court, and they're ripping it up to re-put clay, that's a lot more machinery and access. Does this get, or does that fall into some, is that other, you know, is that technically is maintenance? But if they're doing ground disturbance outside, I don't know, can we put like, ground disturbance in there? Normal maintenance outside of ground disturbance, or? I don't know.
Well, "The development or establishment of new or expanded recreational facilities and/or uses is regulated." So maybe we could add it to that, something about the development, comma, redevelopment or establishment?
No.
Okay.
Because that would kind of fall under, like, repair of an existing pool, if they wanted to break a concrete wall in the pool and fix it, that's a lot more than, yes, it's maintenance, but that's a lot more. So that would help that, too.
Yeah. Yep. So then, on 11, still on page 20. That's the, that's the example that we had about where they wanted to dredge it. And I think if we just add, you know, "If maintenance requires dredging, that becomes a regulated activity." And I get rid of the however that I recommended, shouldn't have said that, I don't know. Okay. Number 12 there, I have a comment on, just because we saw this happen, somebody sort of listed to the letter of the law, but they put, in order to put their 144 square foot shed in, they filled in part of the lake. So I think it should say, you know, "No fill should be added to the wetland itself." Wetland or water body itself.
Which page is that, Jen?
Um, that's, I think I'm still on 20, "Moving at a Snail's Price."
Is this number 12?
Yeah.
Because like, you're saying if they put it right on the bor, border of the wetland, they're in the buffer, but if they fill across, I see, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, so what, what we saw, somebody, they, they put a small shed down on there, right by the lake. But in order to make it not fall in, they had to, they put stuff in the lake. And it was less than two feet of, probably, less than two feet of fill.
But it was, yeah.
But it was in the water.
No, no, that makes sense.
And so technically, they were okay, but the spirit is not, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, the next one I had was, oh. In some places, and this isn't, this is just a typo, in some places, regulated activities start being capitalized all the time, and in some places, they're not, and it's just. And then I move to 23. And I just don't, number F, under, I guess it's 1F. This is a new thing, but I just don't get why we would have new expansion within a wetland or water course. I just, especially the word new. I don't, I think it's prohibited by 217-5A.
Or it should be.
So it just, I, I, again, this might have been something, I mean, when Valerie and people were writing it up, they might have misinterpreted stuff, but I think that can't be there. So this would be part of the letter, this would be one of the recommendations to the town board. That can, that's not, that's more than a typo, that's a.
Yeah, that's a whole new concept.
Right. So. Yep.
So you're 1F?
Yeah, 1F on page 23.
Um, no. So this is. Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's a different 1F.
No, no, yeah, no, okay.
Well, so you're just saying, you don't think it should be, you don't think it should be allowed at all?
I don't think it should be allowed, no, I don't. I mean, if somebody, and I don't even know why we would expand it.
So.
If you have to repair, you can repair it. If somebody did something and it's in a buffer area before, but I don't think we should be, if you want to expand or put a new septic system in, you got to be outside the wetland or water course.
If you do that, right, if you say, "It's not regul, or it's not allowed."
Yeah.
That application we've been having for that little house on that property, that the entire property is wetland buffer, can't be built, so that becomes a non-buildable lot.
Wait a minute, which, which?
96.
96, yeah.
Oh, it's in, it's.
That whole property.
Yeah, but it's in the buffer, it's not in the wetland or water course itself.
For say.
Oh, so you're saying just remove wetland and water, you're okay with buffer?
I'm not happy with it, but yes, I'm okay with it, yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. No, no, that clarifies a lot of things.
Actually, I think it- new should not-
Right. Well, new in a buffer-
Well, yeah, you have to.
Yeah, okay.
You have to do it, so ninety-six, right.
Okay, okay, that makes more sense.
But- but-
I don't- I agree with you. I don't like either of it, but it wa- that's just a case where we create it.
And take out wetland, um-
Yeah, you have to take out wetland or water course.
Yeah, because-
Absolutely.
You literally can have it in the lake.
Right. Yeah, I mean, this is-
I mean, you wouldn't be-
Yeah, but now it's not.
It wouldn't get approved, because the Health Department doesn't allow any of this.
Well, so some of us might remember Petroschelli.
Oh, no.
Yeah, you don't. Nobody- nobody here does, except me. So-
There's something that was built in the light-
It wasn't- it didn't get built, because, but what they- the engineer actually went to the Department of Health and said that, "We are going to hold you..." They wrote, "I hold harmless agreement on the Department of Health if anything went wrong," which allowed- yes.
And- and the Health Department said yes?
And the Health Department said yes.
Who benefited from that?
Well, it turned out that the Planning Board, in its wisdom, did not- this Planning Board did not approve it. But that was partial- but the Department of Health had approved the septic system. It was partially because the- the Board was asking for test holes and stuff to be done, and the applicant said, "No, I'm not doing test holes," and then you kind of, then we're not going to approve you. This- I was not on the Board. I was on the CAC at the time. Well, and, but this was the, um... I was amazed that the Department of Health had agreed to allow it.
I wonder who signed that.
Hmm.
But so, to get rid of wetland, water course, we're leaving new and just letting buffer?
Yeah, just had buffer.
Just buffer. Okay. So... Okay, so that means, so on the, on page 24, if we get that removed, what I had said is something about, um... It says, because- because C says, "They're not encouraged within a buffer area." Right, and I was going to say, "If you're allowed within water course," we want to say something about, "It strongly discouraged, you idiots," but, um, it- we can take that out, if we get them to agree to-
Yeah.
say it shouldn't go in a wetland or water course.
I just have a-
You can just leave this the way it is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just have a question on- on why would, as point of information, why was the wetland inspector shall report regularly and meet periodically with the Planning Board taken out?
Because they don't do it.
Oh, okay.
So- so, I think one of the things, though, that I wanted to be able to say here is, so, I mean, because they go do stuff, but if the Planning Board says, "Hey, I see this thing on Main Street."
Right.
Um, "Wetland inspector, and could you come tell us what's going on there?" We should be able to ask for-
Yeah, that's why I- I-
But this one, the report regularly, I mean, the content and status of all the activity applications-
I- I under- it's really broad, and I- we never- but we should have some ability to-
We should have some ability to ask about the sta- the- the content or status of activity permits.
Yeah, even a six-month report, I mean, like, eh-
Yeah, well-
Meaning that are administratively approved.
Yeah, these are all ones that are administratively approved. And, but, I'm- I remember saying something to Jan one time. I said, "Oh, I'd love to see that," and he said, "I've never done it," you know? So they don't- it's not currently done. I think- I think what we should, I mean, I would love, it'd be interesting, but I think what we should be able to do is ask about any specific-
Yeah, do you think that needs to be codified, though? I mean-
Does it need to be codified? I don't know.
I think it's pushing the boundary. The whole point of administrative approval, that it's not coming to us.
Yeah.
And we could always, if we wanted to, we could go to the building department, pull plans, right, as residents, or any human beings.
Yeah, or just ask-
Okay, doesn't have to be codified. Just wanted to-
Yeah.
Right, okay. And that's why we have you, is to tell us what we do need and we don't. Um, the Certificate of Compliance. Oh, I just wanted to bring up here something, and I should talk to Jan about it, that the building inspector has started to say, for any, um, CO or Certificate of Compliance, um, you have to show that you have pumped your septic within the last five years, if you have a septic system. And so that might be something, this is not really part of the code, but it might be something that we ought to talk to Jan and ourselves, essentially, about doing, that when you do a, uh, closeout of something, it should- they should have pumped their septic. Um, on page 28.
Wait, so we could really just put that into any resolutions?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Because, right, that doesn't need to be code. That can just be a resolution?
Could be. Could be just a condition.
A standard condition of the resolution?
And, you know, it's kind of- it kind of worked. Okay. So, um, this one is, where did I say it was? Page... On page 28, I just sort of... This is a public hearing, and they remove the sign af- if the application is withdrawn, the public hearing is closed, et cetera. Um, and then if it's inactive, and then if an application is reactivated, signs should be posted. And I don't think that's right. I think- I think if the application is reactivated, if somebody comes back in-
It's a new application?
It's a new application, and you follow normal procedures, so that you would only post the signs when you had a new public hearing.
So do you just get rid of that sentence and all, right? Like, just talk about inactive? I don't know, that's you-
I don't know, or you just say, if-
If- if- if an application-
Is thereafter reactivated, normal procedures should apply, you know? Normal application procedures will apply. I don't know. I just was- I just seemed that odd. If this is within the public hearing and-
Yeah, it's in the public hearing section.
Now, the public hearing is, um, is to our- to our discretion, correct?
Uh, no. If it's a wetland, I think-
You know what? Are you doing with that? I'm sorry.
No, no.
I would just say, in the event an application is withdrawn, or the public hearing is, take out inactive. Because that whole inactive thing is just going to invite questions. Right? So if you open the public hearing, until it's app- until withdrawn or it's closed, the sign stays up, right?
Right.
I mean-
What they're-
Once- I mean, once you open the public hearing, I don't think anything-
If they just stop coming, we said-
If they stop coming.
And he- so what they're basically saying, if it's not appeared on the agenda for three months or more, it's inactive?
Or shall be designated as withdrawn, like you're saying?
Yeah, maybe we just say-
And then it's-
Say if they don't, once the public hearing-
It's- it- this was just weird?
Yeah, this is weird, yeah. I think, you know, some of this came in, I think some of this-
This is old-
This whole inactive thing, I think, was really designed to deal with, maybe not with, not so much applications that are for public hearings that have started, but applications that, like, are kind of presented, and then they come back.
Well, and we have some Eskelson or somebody, I mean, I think, came once, and just, we've never seen them again.
And they come again, and what, yeah, it kind of falls, and then what happens when they come back, and all that, and everything is stale, right? It's like-
But- but it's the- the thing is, you're not going to go post a sign when somebody reactivates an applica- you know, re- the normal-
I would just say, in the event an application is drawn, or the public hearing is closed, shall move within five business days.
Right.
And I would take out this whole thing about inactive. I'd take the whole thing out.
Good.
Yeah.
It just seemed odd to me.
It's just invite- it's going to invite a hole.
And- and this is what's currently in our code, so it's not really caused any problems, but it's- it, if you're cleaning junk up-
So when- so, I'm sorry, does it just- what happens if someone does just stop coming? Do they have a limitation? Like, when does an application just fizzle off?
Well, if- if you open the public hearing and they just stop coming, I think you could close the public hearing.
And deny.
And then deny.
But that's if you have a public hearing. What we have now are people who apply, and then they never come back, and then-
But this is the public hearing section.
This is the public hearing section, yeah. I think- I think this language was designed to deal with those- those situations, like the one you're referring to, that the folks came in, they present materials, and then they just kind of disappear. We don't know where they are. Um, and we may have had some in the past where there was more of a concern about, you know, a wet, like, something- something needed to get done.
Right.
Where the- the filing of the permit was an acknowledgement, something needed to be done, and they just-
Yeah, I mean, we have- we have some now that have stayed away more, too.
Yeah, yeah.
But so, but I don't think, as per purpose of this code, we just take this whole thing out. Thank you. And is that something that goes in as our recommendation letter, or are you just going to take care of it as a- as a typo?
I'm still trying to- no, that- that'll be a recommendation, but I, yeah. I'm still trying to figure out how I'm going to present this as kind of a product. I think that, like a- like a red line, or, you know, with some things explained in the letter. I'll have to think that through.
Right, so you put a little number in- number here, and refer to it in the- in the memo as a number one?
Yeah, or, you know, just like a, you know, like a red line with comments, and utilize that, you know?
Yeah, so my Adobe, uh, I have a- I lost my good Adobe editor, and, um, so all I can do are these little yellow things now. So here's where, um... So- so, on the bottom of page 29, it has the Wetland Water Course Delineation Report and Assessment. And so I think this is where you are, the permit application materials. So this is where you could put Appendix A, maybe. So this is saying what the appendix, what the report submitted to us ought to be, but it- And again, Jan- Jan could be really helpful on it.
Yeah, I was just going to ask Jan.
But I- that was my thought there. Okay, then we get, all of a sudden, we've been talking approval authority, approval authority, until the bottom of page 32, when it goes to Planning Board again. And I think this is still under the general application, permit required, so it's all- so it's whether it's admin or, um, Planning Board. So I think that should be approval authority for both B and D there. And the same things with starting on the top of page 33. Am I going- have you gone? Have we missed something that you had at common, or?
No, not yet.
Yeah. Oh, so you have some down there?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and then on page 36 is where it refers, you know, refer to Appendix B of this chapter. And again, um... I think it would be, you know, you could put a something under there that says, you know, acceptable mitigation includes, or... Um, and I will say, it's probably- Let's see if I can find, um... Appendix B. Appendix B is- is three pages, but I think it would be good to be inside. If we didn't put, for any reason, we didn't put, um, Appendix B in, and decided it was better to leave out, then I think we really have to say-
One to one?
One to one in here, and then say, "Refer to it," because because so many people seem to be surprised. But I- I think it would be better if we could
Yeah.
figure out how to just get rid of the appendix.
I don't know the- and, I mean, once, if you put it in, that's probably going to be enough-
Yeah.
And manage it. Uh, but I just don't even know if four is necessary, giving an order of preference? I don't know if that's like a- it's like a personal opinion thought of it, versus a... I mean, I'm fine with it. It doesn't really matter if it's there or not, but-
No, I think, well, so you want to minimize and then minimize disturbance, then preserve anything that- and then rectify, and then replacement. I think that's okay.
If Appendix B is in it, it ma- because I just see it as someone saying, "Oh, well, I did try to minimize. I am..." You know what I mean, using those as why I'm miti- you know, as mitigation? But if you're saying one to one somewhere of, like, doing something, then as long as it's there, I think you're right. It should be fine.
I mean, this is my personal thing, is get rid of the appendices where you can. Then, the security stuff, I, like, figured somebody else had looked at that.
No, that has language, you know, the-
Yeah.
And I think Judd knows what he's going to do with it.
Right, right. And then, um, oops, on page 42, I think, something is missing in the- in- in bullet D.
My apologies.
Quite all right.
Yeah, just saying.
It's- it's probably not something big, but it- I couldn't quite figure out what it is. And then that's all I had for 217.
I have, um, um... Maybe I'm just not reading it right. Um, in A, I don't know if it's in or out, to tell you the truth.
Which page?
Uh, this is 45, 2A.
Page 45?
Yes. "Any request payment made by the town shall be considered an estimate of the review cost."
I'm sorry, what was that? Word section was that?
This is 45. I just don't, I'm tired.
Page 45.
Uh, C.
It's 2A.
Any request for payment?
Yeah, no, yeah, the A is crossed out, but it's meant as a...
No.
But I don't know how.
It's part of two. It's the next thing after two. Yeah. "Any request for payment made by the town shall be considered an estimate of the review cost." In other words, when we...
Yeah, "Any request for payment by the town shall be considered an estimate of the review cost."
But is that really, we basically say, give us $2,000.
"Any request for payment by the..."
It's not very clear to me.
No.
Well, yes, but...
Because if review costs more than 2,000...
You ask for another 2,000, right?
If it's under 2,000, get refund.
You give it back. So it's, how about, "Any request for payment made be, shall be, you know, applied to the review costs," or, I mean, we have changed it. Every once in a while, we say, okay, this is, you know, if somebody's, we say, give us a thousand bucks, but, yeah.
Yeah.
This is unclear.
Yeah. And then, why was the seeker escrow taken out, the escrow account procedures?
That's a good question. I think in talking this out, I'm going to just go back. With Valerie, we felt that you had the, you had the seeker authority through the seeker rights, and we didn't need to restate it. I think that, I think, I, my recollection is, we felt that you had the path of escrow through the town code, and then you had a separate path strictly through, you know, through the seeker itself. But let me go back, and I just want to go back and look at that again. If nothing else, we should just recite that we're not...
Well...
That, in other words, maybe we should have a recitation in that the, the, the ability of the town to request an escrow shall be, in addition to what we can do on the seeker.
Exactly, exactly.
Not advocating.
Yeah, making it clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, or up and above, say, the estimate the town, you know, can be for review costs of any submitted plans and seeker, or something like that.
That, or, you know, it doesn't, you know, this is in addition to the escrow.
Just, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
In 217-14 judicial review and appeal, why did we take out, provided that such proceeding must be initiated within 30 days, or is this going through the Article 78?
217, I'm sorry.
14. And that's, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
52.
Yeah, 217-14. I don't know why we took that out. It's the law.
Yeah, I know. Or maybe it's because Article 78...
Oh, no, 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 no.
The state law says it?
No, 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 no. I don't know why we took this out, and it should be there.
Okay.
Yeah. Because the 30-day limitation is going to apply under town law to site plan, subdivision, special permit, but it's not going to apply to wetland permit, and we should have this in here to keep this straight.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So I just have one, when we were talking about the escrow. So it's not about town code, it's just about our review. So if we're done with this, I can just ask that, or...
Yeah.
So I talked with Judd about it a couple months ago, about the review process with escrow payments for a project of ours that was through the town. And what seems to happen is when a wetlands permit comes in, or a stormwater permit, we don't really men it, but anyway, those come in, Jan's office does the review. And their review of that application tends to then almost fall into their standard review of a site plan approval. So they're looking at everything. So they're giving comments on structural entities and full review of these, where from a wetlands permit activity, those reviews are outside of it. And if it wasn't a wetlands application, that review of those systems would be under building permit. So there's time being taken into that escrow account on things that I feel are outside of that initial review that would have been handled by building. So it's not that it's not getting reviewed, but now they're paying, I mean, that's what a building permit fee is for. So now they're almost getting double charge for a fee because of time spent. So I just, as a board, if you feel that, I think that's something that we can look at to define or narrow the scope of certain reviews pending the type of application that they're reviewing, instead of doing a standard. And I'm probably oversimplifying what their office is doing, but that's something that I see, because we do, I mean, he gives a very detailed review of all the applications. And for certain projects, if it's very specific of a wetlands or stormwater versus a site plan, I think these reviews should be different because, you know, that would be a, fall into something else.
No, we're done. So... I don't know if everything that gets a wetland or, or stormwater permit goes to the building department for a building permit. Maybe, I, you know, I'm not sure of if there are, if there are, I don't know if there are categories, but...
Right, but then that...
I understand what you're saying, is that if you get a wetland permit, and then you go and you pay the building department application fee, that's supposed to cover some of the stuff that's already been done. I don't know.
Well, so, I mean, but even in that situation, right, the wetland permit is looking at, generally speaking, right, disturbance within the wetland buffer area.
Right.
It's not looking at pool fence enclosure.
Right.
Requirements. It's not looking at, you know, outside of general knowledge of how a pool fence, right, digging and things like that.
Required lighting or required, yeah.
Right, it's not looking at...
Electrical connections.
You know, and, you know, how walls are built and things like that.
Right.
So those...
So it's not 100% overlap, for sure?
It's not 100% overlap, but it's, if those things weren't in the project, it wouldn't be looking at it. And in relative terms, shouldn't be. Or there needs to be, or I feel there needs to be some justification for the building permit reduction, because there's this overlap of double payment for a review.
Yeah. Interesting, okay. And I'm almost wondering if some of that came about, because for a while, we had no building inspector here, and so it might have been scope creep a little bit. I don't honestly know, you know, just to make sure that whatever got done, got done a little bit safely. I don't know that that's part of this.
Yeah, no, I agree. I don't think...
Yeah, that's just...
I just figured it was a good way, we're all here, and we can talk about how we want to have Jan do the reviews, right, because that's, that's something that was...
And whether he has had a discussion with, with Kevin about some of this, I don't, you know, I don't know any background. So it's probably something worthwhile, having some talk with Jan about it at some point, yeah.
And if it is to alleviate...
I'll put it on my list of things.
You know, we do only have, we have two points, whatever. If it is to alleviate workload, that's fine, but once again, it's, if there's a payment associated with it in some respects.
Well, and, yeah, I understand the point.
Yeah, that would be...
I don't know how to solve it, but I understand it.
Yeah.
Versus building permit. Okay. Anything more on, on... 217? Okay. I am so relieved that everybody agrees that we shouldn't be putting chemical things and septic things into wetlands. I was like, how did that come about?
I don't know how to think about that.
I wonder what that...
Okay, so here, 220, this one actually says amend. All right. Oh, typo. A small point on page three, on the bottom of page three. So we talk about somewhere, wine and cider tasting, and then here, it just has an area for wine tasting. So I'm assuming that if you're going to, I don't know that anybody would ever fault them for that, but we might as well get it right. It should say wine and cider tasting. Again, I don't know quite whether that's a recommendation to the town board, or whether that's a fix that you guys make. All right. On page six, there's the definition of bed and breakfast establishment. So the definition has both residential and non-residential districts allowed for bed and breakfast establishments.
I'm sorry, I was looking at this accessory.
Wait, it's quite right.
So where are we?
I'm on page six, the definition of bed and breakfast establishment.
Can I go back?
Hmm?
Can I go back? I have a question.
Yeah. So in that definition, it talks about both residential and non-residential districts, but later, when we get to the special permit, it just says bed and breakfast in retail districts, or residential districts, I'm sorry, in residential districts. And it doesn't, they've added the in residential districts, and I don't know why. So I think it's okay to have a bed and breakfast in non-residential districts. I mean, why not?
Yeah.
So if somebody wanted to run one in...
Is it saying you're not required to get a special use permit?
I don't know what it means. So I'm just pointing this out here, and we can talk about it when we get to the, it looked like maybe either you don't need a permit, or it's not allowed, and I can't tell which. So, all right, you wanted to go back up a little.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Page three. Yeah. "What is the genesis of the accessory or antenna equipment?" Do we have a problem with? It's just curiosity.
So I thought the whole, all of the, now, maybe I misremember this, but I thought that there was some language that was available from New York State, and we were basically grabbing all that, and all of the accessory and antenna stuff went in. But I, maybe that's, that's worth a question.
I think you just read accessory antenna equipment, right?
Yes. But it's sort of like, it's...
Well, it might be worth a question to Valerie.
Generators and batteries, I mean, so it doesn't sound like, I know we were taking all that language.
Yeah, but...
But this does not seem to be...
That language.
Well, not that area.
Hmm.
But I don't know.
So maybe that's a Valerie question. Who would ask Valerie? Yay, Judd! Yee-haw!
Good answers.
And we took out alternative tower structure. I have the man-made trees, clock towers, bells, deep with light bulbs, similar alternative mountains.
Yeah, they've got...
You know?
They've got other things somewhere in here, I forgot.
Yeah, that's picked up.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
So this is a net, but decibel and, and sound decibel units are not anywhere in this one, but I did find the definition of decibel and noise, so I left it in there. Density unit. So Jan had at one point, I'll just say, less than favorable words on how we define density units in this town. He thought it was very confusing and very difficult. And I said, okay, give me what you would recommend. And so I think we need to go to Jan and get the right idea of density unit. I mean, if we wanted to make it... Because they changed some of the numbers further on to make it better, but it's just, it's very hard, because sometimes you end up with a half of a density unit because you get, you know, or you get a half of a dwelling unit. It's just very, it's not really easy. So I, I said, rather than me going and trying to look up other codes, let's just give it to Jan.
Look, Jan.
Okay. And he said it was a good idea, so, yeah, fine.
I have...
Next, yeah, what page?
13. You have something before?
Oh, I have something before, 13. I have, so when you go to electric, this is, I think, one that can almost be a typo. When you go to electric vehicle charging on page 11, I think you should delete level one, because you have level one, two, and the direct charge, fast currents below it.
In the title, you mean?
In the title, yeah. Or just delete the one, if you want to leave level and have the level one, two, and, but it should be, you don't want to define one and then say a two is underneath it. I think that's a typo.
Do we, do you want to define level one or level two regarding the amperage versus just regarding the current? Because those are, those are current standards. I mean, we may have level two chargers that are over 100 amps very soon, you know? So do you want to just be on the voltage? I don't know if this is taken from somewhere bigger.
I think Valerie sort of made these, well, I don't...
I mean, she's not wrong in a sense, but like, you know, 100 amps breaker, like, it's, it's, sorry, I just, I, I'm like an electric car freak, so, like, a level two charger is, right now, the highest ones are 80 amp chargers that need 100 amp breaker, right? So you're defining something by an electrical code usage, which is weird.
By today's technology.
By today's technology. So I just don't know if you should just note it as the current, which is it's either 120 volt AC or 240 volt AC.
240, yeah.
Yeah, because that's going to give you...
Yeah.
Because it doesn't really matter what the amperage, you know?
I know. My, my little thing, I charge on eight amps, and it goes overnight for a long time.
Right, so you're, you're not even a level one.
I'm not even a level one, I know.
Maybe someday.
Someday.
You know, I just, it's a lot of definition for something. I don't know if it's necessary.
Yeah.
And if it's going to be outdated soon.
And I guess all, I mean, DC would be the same.
I'd like just looking at the circuits, because that's what really defines what has to be there electrically.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, but, I mean, it's a better, clearer thing. I mean, the, yeah, but, I mean, it's a better, clearer thing. Oh, that's me. Time to take my pill. I'm on antibiotics. So is that all right? Judd, you'll take that?
The, yeah, in other words, just tied to voltage.
Yep. Level one operates on a 120 volt AC circuit.
Yeah, level two operates on a 280 or 240, or just go straight to 240?
I don't know.
I mean, to be honest, it's like, because it's really 110 to 120, you know, it's like this weird range, so I don't really know. I, I'm not an electrical, I just, you know, um, you know, because it's 110, 120, or 208 to 240, so I'm not, I'm not, I don't think I could give you the answer exactly.
Just take off the breakers part.
Okay.
Yeah, take down the amperage, just give us voltage.
You had something on page...
Thirteen.
See if I have anything before that.
Before?
Nope.
Okay. On page thirteen, group, family, daycare home. It, it doesn't read, maybe I'm not reading it. A family home which is a personal resident, a family residence which provides child daycare on a regular basis for more than three hours per child, seven...
Oh, yeah.
Up to...
Yeah.
Twelve children.
There needs the four, the four shouldn't have been crossed out.
Yeah.
Three hours per day, per child, for seven to 12 children. So it's, take out before the, take out the cross out before seven. I'm going to ignore this home occupation.
Yeah, I have that too.
Oh, do you? Okay.
Wait, we, we want this to say three hours per day per child, right?
No, it just says for more than three hours per child.
Okay.
And then in the next line, it crosses off the four in front of seven, it should, that four should be back. It should say four, seven to 12 children.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Okay, got it.
Okay, this may be farfetched, but given what we, um...
Give him a thing. You're on page...
I'm sorry.
You're on page fourteen.
Yeah. Home occupation. And it's sort of like the incidental or secondary to the use of the dwelling for dwelling purposes. Does not change the character thereof, does not have any exterior evidence, but it, it, it seems based on what the decision that we had with what's accessory and what's primary in the, uh, the towing issue.
In the which one?
You know, in, in the towing truck issue.
Oh, yeah.
That this has the same... Character. And it's, it sort of would allow for things that maybe one wouldn't want.
Well, that's where this does not have any exterior evidence.
Right.
I think it's important.
Yeah.
So you can't put a tow truck in your, in your house.
But you can put, actually, you can put, now, you can put, like, construction, you know, trucks.
But that, you have to get a permit.
Special permit.
Yeah. You have to get a special permit for that. I was sort of asking, what about somebody who says, I need to have five parking spaces?
I was going to say, that's where I was going. It does not have any exterior evidence...
I think that...
For additional parking needs. So it's secondary use, something like that.
Yeah, and, and they have the conduct, they, they, once you specify what you can't do, sort of allows what you...
Can do.
Yeah.
And so the thing that I'm thinking about is the gas station on, probably shouldn't say these, but there's a gas station that has a residence next to it. But it has maybe 15 trucks parked outside. It's a residence.
Right.
So I'm, I'm thinking that... I'm thinking that we should say, does not have any exterior evidence, including, you know, of sec- sec- that, secondary use. And sort of, maybe the next sentence should say, additional parking is considered an exterior evidence.
Additional parking is?
You know, or, yeah. Is considered exterior evidence, and that keeps somebody from putting their, their tow truck, or their, you know, five parking spaces, or something as evidence of that. I'm wondering, just...
And also, you know, as, as I was saying, only those are not permitted, are not deemed to be home occupations. Anything else you can think of outside that?
Or business of any kind, right? Am I reading that right? So like...
Stores, trays, or businesses of any kind shall not be...
So no business of any kind can be considered, right?
Then what is allowed?
Yeah, that's what I think.
Basically, working from home as a...
Individual person.
Yeah, working from home. You can, you can do remote work from home. But I think somewhere else, it says that you can have business in the home.
No, you can have a business, I mean, yeah, I think...
Yeah, that's what I, it's...
Professional offices?
Yeah, under professional something.
Right.
There's, let's... Yes.
I'm not going to make it.
Okay, I understand.
I apologize for that.
Well, we do have three, so we can continue to...
You're okay.
Do this, yeah. I, I know, it's a...
I'm just...
It's a long night, yeah.
I'm starting to lose it, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, sure.
I do appreciate the, uh, hard copies, so I'm giving them back to you.
All right.
On two twenty.
Thank you very much.
There you go, and thank you. You helped me a lot.
Okay. Oh, and here's where we get into things, oh, God.
So I, I, you know...
Yeah.
I think they're just issues where...
Number on page, oh, so you, you have any more on that?
No.
Okay.
I'm on D.
All right, my next one is on page fifteen. I have lots of things. The first thing is this whole, um, I sort of skipped over it, but if you go back to the definition of clubs, which is on page eight. So the club on page eight, it makes it sound, it's like a, okay, we're a, I don't know, a Boy Scout unit, or where we go, we do trail repairs, or we're a hiking group or something. I mean, it sounds that way. So then we get down to, on page fifteen, and we start using the word clubs in things. So I think instead of health clubs, we should say, um, fitness centers, wellness centers, facilities, because if we're going to define a club as a not-for-profit...
Yeah, yeah.
Gathering of people.
So use facility instead of clubs.
Or, yeah, and, but health facility sounds like it's a medical building. So I was kind of, that's what I was saying, like a fitness center, or a wellness center, but...
Yeah. Well, it's a large wireless facility, and it's not a small wireless facility.
Yeah. Okay. So that's sort of minor, but I think, I, I don't know why the definition of club is in there as it is.
I don't know if you need it, but...
No, because we have country clubs, and we have, I mean, we use clubs for, so maybe the easiest thing is to take the definition of clubs out, but... Yeah, that might be easier, because, because...
Yeah, like, maybe just do a word search to see where it comes up elsewhere.
Well, I did, sort of.
You did?
Well, and it's, it's always health clubs, and it's, it's used in a commercial. There's no non-commercial, I didn't see any non-commercial use. We can... Okay, kennel commercial, I don't know if we want to have anything other than dogs or cats. I think you could probably say it's also other animals kept as pets. I don't know. That's minor. But then the next thing. Kennel private, five or more dogs or cats over six months of age. So when we get further on, it basically deletes the restriction of any number of dogs or cats. So I think maybe a private kennel becomes, I don't know, 10 or more, or something. I think we should have some limit. I don't know...
Why do you need to define the difference between commercial or private?
Because what we end up later saying is that, I'm going to go back to, current code says, you shouldn't have any more than five dogs or cats in a single house. If you have more, you can get a permit as a private kennel. Now. The recommendation, or the code that we've been presented, says, get rid of the limitation of five or more, five dogs or cats. So somebody could have...
Whatever.
Fifty, you know? I think there probably should be some limit, although I don't know who actually inspects it, but if it becomes a health situation where somebody has, you know, 20 dogs in a half acre place. So I don't, I don't know what the right number is. But at some point, I think, and maybe five is too low, but I think there should be a definition that allows, um, a permit to be, to be granted. It's more like, if you get a complaint, you have to go and say, you need a permit. I mean, I think that's really the purpose here.
I have no problem with five.
With leaving it at five?
Leaving it at five, I mean, that seems like a, if someone put it in here, it seems like a good number to be.
Somebody put it in, and we don't know anything about it.
But if you think more, it's...
No, I'm, I actually am uncomfortable with removing that, but I don't know, maybe post-pandemic, more people have multiple animals, but I still think, I don't...
It's like five or more dogs or cats, so you can have 10 animals.
Later it defines five...
In total.
Five cats or dogs, or something, yeah, not, well, what...
See...
So this is on page fifteen. We'll come back to kennel.
I almost have a kennel. I have two do, two cats and a dog.
Yeah, no, you're, yeah, but the difference between that and be having six is really, you know?
The large wireless facility, any wireless telecommunication, that is not a small wireless.
Yeah, because they define the small one as less than 50 feet, and all that stuff later. Uh, that's just a typo. Okay. District regulations. So I'm getting to page thirty-nine. So the first thing is just that, you know, the section's numbers have to fit higher. The second thing is, I went out and looked at the existing zoning code, and the existing zoning code has attachments one, two, three, and four already. So the new thing we have is the new attachment three. I think we already have an attachment three. So I think it has to be attachment five throughout, which also means we have to change it, or, I mean, so let me tell you what attachment, attachment three is currently a list of modifications to the zoning map, historical modifications. But I think that is probably something that people might want, to know when zoning changed. I don't know. So, um... So, yeah, the table of zoning code map amendments is small. I mean, unless we want to keep this new thing as attachment three, and then move the numbers on the others, but we already have an attachment three, is the point. And I... But that is throughout, so that would have to be a mass change.
One, one question on the definition, structure, um, is defined only as a, with an antenna on it, or I'm, I'm very confused? Or is it just because this is this section?
No.
That should be... That should be modified, because that, that relates to, um...
That is an antenna structure.
Antenna structure, yeah.
That's what, okay.
But I remember, we just talked about Joe, um, he didn't like our definition of structure, our town code definition of structure. I don't remember what was wrong with it.
Would it be in this section normally?
Yeah, this is, it's in zoning somewhere.
Yeah, it's what...
So this one, so...
It might be building structure or something, like, sometimes it's done that way. No, it shouldn't be.
That's a good, you don't want this one to be. Yeah. Okay, I should sort of probably ask, I mean, we, I think it would be helpful to keep kind of pounding on and go for a little bit unless somebody's, I know we, we've already lost Bruce. Are you guys okay going? Yeah. You okay keeping going?
I'm okay. I'd rather do it, just get it all done.
Yeah.
I have page forty-eight. Do you have something for forty-eight?
Um, let's see, I was looking at attachments. Yes. Okay. Yes, on page forty. Yeah. So. This, the table. So the first thing is, this is table one, this is lot size and maximum number of ranching animals. All right, so the first thing I want is on F to say, these numbers should not be additive.
Yes.
So that if there are multiple types of animals, the more restrictive number... So that if there are multiple types of animals, the more restrictive number applies to the total.
Yeah.
So if you can either have ten cattle and thirty sheep and you have a mixture of cattle and sheep, you can only have ten total. I don't know how else to do that, but that's one I just.
Yeah, in fact, that came up in discussion.
In discussion, and I think.
Like you can't have like.
I mean, like, or do we have a separate chart that three sheep equal cattle and.
Well, I'm just saying, go to the, but, but you cannot have.
I agree with that.
On that two acre thing, you can't have thirty sheep and twenty-five pigs and ten cattle and. All right, and then the NA on poultry. I mean, birds are noisy. So I really think the minimum lot size should be our, I mean, my recommendation be our one half acre. You get quarter acres and I think because it, because it says no more than ten birds per
Half acre.
Half acre, so I think we ought to be starting at half acre size, so that ought to be half acre. And, or, or maybe two acres, I don't know, but yeah.
On the poultry.
No roosters or.
No roosters, right? Did we, did we put that in?
It's in a future table, but it's not in the residential district. It's in multifamily home districts or something.
Ah.
But it's not here, and I think.
Yeah, that's why it should be.
Wait, you can have roosters in a residential district?
Well, we're saying maybe that's not something we should have.
Now we can.
Well, the code here doesn't say no, and I think fifty, I mean, I'm just saying fifty. Let's see, ten birds per half acre, so that says in five acres, you could have fifty, fifty animals. That just seems, I don't know. That seems like it's not residential. That seems like that's bordering on commercial. You are not going to run, you're not going to have a. I mean, they lay like six and eight eggs.
Well, you could have fifty birds in two and a half acres.
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, that's a, that's a lot of birds.
A lot of birds?
I mean, it's a lot of eggs.
It's a chicken farm.
I think that's it. You're, you're bordering on a commercial chicken farm. I think that number ought to be, I don't know, maybe.
Twenty?
Twenty, yeah, I was going for that too. Twenty, and then, I mean, we, if somebody wants more.
Twenty-five pigs, do you know how many pigs that is?
That's, and they are big.
And they're smelling. If you, if you live downwind from them.
Well, they can't, see, the thing is pigs, oh, I don't know, pigs are happy being, keeping themselves clean. But they can survive in mud, so people let them and, and slop and everything.
Yes.
Okay. So let, so I always thought these numbers are too high. Do we want to just recommend?
Yes.
Okay, so what are we recommending for sheep and goats?
Well, I mean, sheep and goats seem more reasonable because it's three per acre, and I'm sorry, that's what I was, so you'd need ten acres to have thirty sheep.
Okay.
Which seems manageable in a sense. That's a lot of land.
But, but it's the cumulative thing that I, I am more concerned of.
Oh, but I agree. I think for the first part, like you're saying, you're always going to go to the more restrictive end of it.
I think we gotta.
So, well, that actually being said, so if you had, that, we have to be careful on that, because if you had poultry and sheep, that would mean you could only have three sheep per acre, I mean, three birds per acre.
No, I'm saying you could have a total of thirty adults. So you could have.
The same ratio, the thirties are max. Okay, I see what you're saying. So not the number permitted per acre, but the total number.
Right.
Okay.
I think that's where you become restrictive. So, so if somebody wants to keep. And actually poultry was the one thing I was thinking might be the exception to this, but I, I think it makes it easier to say. You know, yeah, if you want to keep ten, ten chickens, you know, you can only keep twenty alpacas.
You have cattle, you, on three or four acres, you can get.
Now, this is outside of the, like, New York State reg, like, farm districts, right?
This is a residential district. This is your next door neighbor.
Yeah, okay.
And this is why I say it, two acres could have. Uh, it just seems, anyway.
All right, so we'll go through it like you said. Okay. So sheep, three adults per acre.
Right, and thirty on ten. You okay with that?
For what I know about these animals, yeah. I can call my wife, she does this.
Ten cows are a lot.
But that's.
On four acres.
No, you can only have one cow per acre, so that's ten acres.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's that. So the pigs would be three adults per two acres. No, no, I'm sorry, per acre, again.
Three per acre.
So's with letters.
So to get to twenty-five, you have to have. I don't know. So you have to have close, you have to have eight acre, eight acres or something like.
You know, I think it would be better off just saying that, because they're not going to take our numbers. Isn't it better that we say in general, and then maybe give them the numbers in general, there are too many.
Yeah, I think we should say there's too many, but I, I, you know. You think the town board is going to sit down and argue? How many?
Yeah, but maybe judge it.
So, so let's say for pigs, let's just say twenty adults instead of twenty-five.
Okay.
Cattle, I'm sort of okay with ten. I don't know why it's in, there's an NA for horses.
Well, I don't know what section.
That, because of the riding academies.
Yeah.
It goes under that.
So there's no maximum? Okay. Poultry, I don't know, maybe. I mean, first I think the, the, it's got to be a minimum of a half acre and.
I think the ten per half acre is probably fine, but I think the overall needs to get reduced down.
I think, I think, let's make, what do you think, twenty?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, twenty, because.
Cause fifty is.
There's a lot of birds.
It's a chicken farm.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a boatload of eggs.
And the current code is five per acre for poultry.
Yeah.
Five per acre?
Yeah.
So this is now ten per half acre.
And I get it, we had COVID and people got into keeping hens, but skyrocketed.
All right, and we should add the no roosters?
I think it is.
No, it's.
Not, oh, okay, yeah.
It's somewhere else, no roosters.
I mean, I'm, I'm kind of indifferent on that. I don't know.
No roosters?
I mean, I understand from a noise perspective, but like it's just an animal.
It's an animal.
And that you can't determine if it's a rooster or not, so now you're promoting slaughter of an animal.
All right, I wouldn't go that far.
Right, maybe not promoting, but, you know what I mean, like, you can't determine, you can't, you can't know, they're just getting eggs, and then you get one or two, right?
Well, if you don't have a rooster, to worry about it. But, uh, billing inspector has been called on complaints of noise.
Yeah, they're noisy.
And their hours of operation are not controlled by our noise awareness.
Their business plan, you know.
Yeah.
They're not fired.
The old, the roosters only crow at dawn is.
Is bullshit.
So, um, yeah, I think that, so, anyway, I think that's done with that one. Um, I have a lot more. Okay. So then we get to. When I'm on page forty-two D.
What are we doing with alpacas and llamas?
Oh, alpacas, let's cut them down to twenty. I don't. You know, I'm, I think, um, this is the, um. Oh, what was his name?
Aldo Bello.
What?
Aldo Bello.
Yes, I think this is the Aldo Bello clause, but my understanding is they're down to about ten.
Yeah.
So if we say twenty, it's.
It's, it's fine.
It's fine.
Well, do you want, and they're a lot bigger, I'm just thinking now, like, three per acre, that's, they're relatively big animals.
Yes, they are.
Do you want to bring two that, two per acre? I don't know, I mean, we could just suggest it, unless you guys think three is fine.
I.
I mean, acre is big, but not that big, and they're big animals.
They are big animals and.
Not bigger than sheep, that's all.
They, um. So in a wetland, in a, in anything that's sort of muddy ground, they can be pretty, they're used to high, dry areas.
One per acre.
What?
Cattle, you're going to have one per acre.
I know.
Then we're going to go to three for alpacas and llamas, they're.
Let's recommend.
A little smaller, but they're not that much. Yeah, two, I think is.
Two, okay. Yeah, I like this educated way we do this, instead of, instead of, we could go out and look at farm standards. Farm standards and what they recommend, but no, we're just kind of like winging it. Well, you know.
Yeah, but I don't think there was any.
I'm just, you know, because like even health things, I mean, if we looked at poultry for, you know, whatever, yeah, or not anymore, but like what's the state regulated for, or not state, but, you know, health support regulation for cage free and access, I mean, fifty birds, two and a half acres, I don't even think you'd meet those requirements. They need like, I think each bird needs thirty-five square feet, or, you know, like, it adds up really quickly when you're talking fifty birds. So I don't think you'd even meet, like, couldn't sell those eggs for top dollar, that's for sure.
No. So then on page forty-two D. Permitted accessory uses for residential districts, and I think some of the things. So residential districts includes multifamily, if I understand it correctly. So do we want to say, and here's where we get to this whole thing about home-based professional office studio or home. So it's incidental, but now we're allowing two non-resident employees. You know, does not exceed thirty percent of the total floor area of the residence building. So I'm thinking if that's a multifamily building.
Right.
Thirty percent of the floor, this just doesn't make any sense. So I think we, it probably makes sense to call this maybe not residential districts, but residential districts except multifamily.
No, then you'd have to just name the R one or R two.
Call them R one, R two, R one half, R four, R three, yeah. R seven and a half, R two, seven and a half, yeah.
But then you're saying that, so like, I looked at Oak Ridge, so like Oak Ridge Commons, those are multifamily units, right, because they're attached units, so you couldn't have a home office in there?
Well, you could have, this is permitted accessories, so you could have your own, you could have a work from home.
See, I don't think we should take it away from multifamily, but you could maybe define.
I think we should define it and say, maybe, so maybe it's maybe one B instead is not more than two resident, non-resident employed on the present, present premises. So maybe it's except for MF. R MF, not more than two, and then this area residents, except for MF, not, the area does not exceed. Well, it shouldn't be except. But there's something about this does not apply to MF.
And also, it's like home-based office studio or home occupation. It, it doesn't, based on the home occupation definition.
Well, so I'm thinking, could you?
Do you know what I mean?
Could you care, could you pet sit, you know, could you, um. Could you be adult daycare?
But you can have, you can have two non-resident employees associated assistants on a home occupation that you really can't have a business. I, I am not understanding the.
Yeah, yeah, but it.
Concept.
The two, the two things conflict.
Yeah. And then when you get to the professional office, studio, I don't know what that studio is. You can have all these people.
So maybe I'm missing, where, where are you now?
Here, in the same thing, it's home-based office, such as it's incidental with residential, okay, not more than two resident, non-resident employees associated. So you have, in the professional office, you can have like a dental office with a little sign and have a whole bunch, you know, have two, two non-resident employees.
Now, this is, oh, right. I, this just doesn't.
And you can have that for a studio. What kind of studio?
Well, dance studio, dance studio, but, but this is now permitted. The other one was you didn't need a permit for. Oh, no, maybe this is not right.
Don't just permitted that.
This is permitted as used, not.
Yeah.
As a break, not, right, so this doesn't make sense.
No.
And again, this is our existing code.
No, that doesn't.
I don't see that much of an issue with this. I could understand what you mean by the thirty percent, so you're, because if it's attached units, you could say thirty percent of the. Like, it kind of says of the occupied, the occupied areas, such occupation, the area in which it's occupied, right? Like, you could define it as the unit it's in, maybe, you know what I mean, if it's an attached multifamily unit, but it's within the one unit. Otherwise, I don't see the concern you're having with.
So instead of saying, maybe you just get rid of the building, word building, does not exceed thirty percent of the total floor area of the residence.
Yeah, right.
Get rid of the word building.
Right, but it's the, what's allowed and what's not allowed is what's confusing to me.
So it's that definition part.
Contradicts the home occupation.
Yeah.
I, that's what I agree when it said no businesses.
No business.
That's what I didn't understand.
But it's like, in, the professional, it allows professional offices with a whole bunch of, you know, two people there.
So you could be an architect and you could be a.
Right, but what's a studio? I don't know.
I think a studio could come, should come out.
Yes, I think it should too, because I don't know what it is.
Yeah, and I'm looking back at like, what you don't want in home occupations, like barber shop, beauty parlor.
Right.
That, to me, is like a studio, right?
Right.
Yeah, I, I think studio should come out.
Okay.
And home occupation should be sort of redone.
Yeah.
But not to make it too.
Well, does it, so, maybe we're confusing ourselves, or maybe I'm confusing. So the home occupation that we were having issues with is really just a definition. So they're defining a home occupation as not a business, but something you're doing for another business, right?
No, it, it could be.
Because it says no business.
Yeah, that's the, that's the hard thing. So if I'm running a, um. Proofreading business out of my home. And I, if I work for somebody else, I'm working from home, but if I work for.
Right, if you, you have.
If I'm doing it myself, it's a business, so that's.
If you have an LLC.
But so then it's not called a home, but that's what I'm saying, that's a definition, so then it doesn't become a home occupation, that's considered a professional office. And then this is the definite, this is what.
Yeah, but a professional office has its own definition.
That's right here, yeah.
Well, this isn't a definition. This is the allowable permit.
Definition.
And it might, I, I don't know, yeah, yeah, so I'm just saying. I don't know if this section has that much relationship to the definition of what home occupation is, except for the fact that home occupations can function as long as they meet these codes. Right?
I don't know. No, otherwise why would you have the definition?
Well, because you're just defining what home occupation is.
Maybe the problem is that they call it a home-based professional office. If we got rid of that and just went back to professional office. Oh, but it then says, but, or home occupation.
Right, and, and you have a definition for home occupation. And it says that these businesses are not allowed, and then you have what is permitted.
Basically says businesses aren't allowed.
Right.
Wait, wait, but that, but that's just saying those businesses aren't allowed under the definition of home occupation.
Yeah, but they are allowed.
But this is what, that's why it's a professional office, so those are considered professional offices.
Okay.
So if this is the only section that these two come up.
So the other thing is, I don't. So the other thing is, I don't understand indeed why they say for residential districts.
Because...
Because, because if I want to, um, work upstairs in horse and hound, or someplace, or... It's, oh, that might actually be a residential district.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, the borough, instead of their yoga studio, I want to do...
But that would be, it's not, if it's not a residential district, then, yeah, it would be regulated.
That makes sense.
But if you have home occupation, you have a definition for home occupation, which does not allow something, then how can you allow it over here?
Right, okay.
That's, that's the only...
We, so we need to get that worked out. I don't think we're gonna solve it tonight, but that's a...
Yeah, that needs to be, that's a not, yeah.
But that's what I'm saying, is, that's why the professional office section is in there. So you have three different things, and you can do, you just have to meet these requirements, right? And you fall into the satisfaction of what it is.
Right, but they seem like they're internally inconsistent.
I think they're gonna go back and say, what are we trying to control? You don't want, you don't want a residence, it's supposed to be an accessory use, so you don't want a residence converted into something that is basically, you know, a business generating all the incidents of, you know, patrons coming in and out, or all that kind of activity.
Yeah, but you have to have a definition that you have to then...
Slot in.
Slot in the accessory users.
Right.
So they have to match.
Right.
And you're right, what do we wanna do and what do we want not to?
So, I think we want people to be able to do work from home. And to do things without a lot of, a lot of traffic, that's clear. I mean, that we should have.
Because otherwise you change the wording, you don't say home occupation, you say something else.
Then, then, the question is, what do we want people to be able to do in a residential area as far as...
So should it really just say, this is professional offices excluding home occupation, home occupation?
I think these should be...
You know, 'cause then a home occupation can do, 'cause then they don't have to determine to say thirty percent, because they're not having, they're not business business.
Right, I, I think that's sort of...
I mean, if you have a definition of home occupation that's fairly tight, then you just say accessory use that permitted is home occupation, and then you go back to the definition, and it's all there.
Yeah.
Well, the question is, do you want...
Now we said home-based professional office.
Right, do you want somebody to be able to have, I don't know, they have, um...
Like you said, a home dentist office, like that.
Or...
That's a professional one.
Yeah, or do you wanna have, yeah, I mean, do you wanna have something like that, where there's a couple of workers, you know, there's an assistant and a receptionist and a, and parking and stuff like that. I have a little more, you know, if somebody is an accountant and they have, you know, one person at a time driving up to their door, and it's, you know...
Yeah, I think that's what I was coming to, like...
Right, that's, that feels less than somebody who, I don't know, has, um...
A beauty parlor.
A beauty parlor, or I was gonna say has, has trunk shows of their clothes, and they have people come in and, you know, every, every afternoon between two and five, and, you know, I don't know. So, the question is, what, so maybe what we do is say to the town board, you know, we think this is unclear and really needs to decide what, what kinds of offices you want in residential districts.
Yeah, because it, it's truly their decision, so it's...
Yeah, so we're trying to solve it, but, but we think that...
We don't really ask them.
We think that that's...
That, that's unclear.
Yeah, it is unclear, yeah.
And it, you know, and, and...
But I, yeah, I think you take, you go back to the, basically, what's the objective? And you walk back from that, yeah.
And it's not our job to do an objective, but it's, it's our job to point out that it's not clear.
You okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, let them...
Yeah, 'cause I, I, I think we want to allow, um, the, the town should probably want to allow some, you know, if somebody wants to do jewelry, make jewelry, you know, in their, bend wire in their home, that's probably okay, but if they have more to do, we have to, all right, I'm sorry, all right.
If we were to go to two twenty-four, three dot one, professional offices in residential districts, it has a nice preamble of what the intent is, to create a more gradual transition from retail business to general.
But that's only within a hundred feet of the district.
That zoning district, okay.
So that, that's a different...
That's even a fourth issue.
Right. That's within the zoning change, all right, so, but before we get there, page forty-three, here's where they take out the limit on dogs and cats. And I just think that ought to go back in, I'm...
Yeah.
If you wanna make it eight or something, um, I'm, but I would say leave it. I don't understand why it comes out. Okay? And again, it shouldn't, if, in no case do I believe it should come out totally, you can take up the number, but...
I agree.
All right, then, here we get to...
What page?
So, I'm now on the next table, which is on page forty-four. This says it's accessory uses, whereas number page, the other one was sort of allowed uses. And this is more restrictive, here you only get six goats. I really don't get it, and you only get twelve chickens.
Yeah, I, I...
I, so I do not understand, this is an accessory use and the other one is allowed? I, I'm just not...
For a ranching use, I mean...
The other one was on page, um...
Don't define that.
Forty.
Oh, wait.
And it's just...
Yeah, I see.
It does say roosters are prohibited.
Yeah, that's the one that says roosters are prohibited, but it also has much more limited...
So the nor can be, it can be in a buffer. The storage of nor can be in buffer.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
No, wait, further up it had had, wait a minute, let me go.
That, that's...
Oh, no storage in, 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 on page forty, on page forty-four, it says it can't be within a hundred and fifty feet of a buffer.
But here it says...
Where are you now? Forty-six.
Forty-four, water court, property line, water course, or wetland area.
Yeah, so no should be within a hundred and fifty feet, right?
Yeah, of a street, property, but not a buffer.
Well, the hundred and fifty feet is the...
The buffer?
The buffer.
Okay, okay.
You were trying to trick me. Oh, okay.
No, I'm just tired.
No. When we're ready to move, I'm, page forty-five is my next one.
So, I, I agree with you on those two tables, sorry, I was just looking back. So it does define ranching as something on an animal farm?
Yeah, it's a, like a principal permitted use.
Right, so, so that chart is referencing like a farm, so not a residential district?
No, it is in a residential district.
It could be still a residential district, it's just that it's...
It's just saying it's a farm use, but, you know, I...
So you'd have to have a special permit to be considered a ranch?
No.
It's an asterisk item, isn't it?
It is asterisk.
Oh, is it asterisk?
Yeah. It is here, too. So that might be the, I'm just trying to see why, like, there had to be a reason.
I didn't think...
Yeah, special permit, um, in all residential districts.
For a ranch?
For a range, yeah.
So then, so that, that chart, I mean, we could still limit it, but that would be a special permit situation, that original chart.
Right, so we should probably... Let me go back up.
I don't have a big problem limiting ranching, and I'm afraid that this is a special permit under here?
I know, schedule of regulations.
Yeah, it's agricultural uses, page two, midway on the schedule.
So, that means that it's commercial?
Well, it's commercial in nature, but it's permitted in residential districts.
Right, but it's commercial in nature, so they can sell the eggs.
Yeah.
I thought there was some... No, no, they have a regular says no retail sales.
See, that doesn't...
No, but then, but there's, but you can have...
They have a stands.
You can have stands, you can have farmer's stands.
Yeah, we have farmer's stands, so...
But neither, I'm just saying that that's, this is a special permit, so it's a particular sentence.
But what I'm saying is, like, if you have a special permit, regardless of that, it says no retail. And yet, you're allowed farm stand, which is retail.
Except as temporary stands for sale, so you can do temporary stands for sale.
Okay.
So, do we still wanna change that chart, or let it be what it is? Sorry, we spent all that time.
I think we still wanna change it.
That's why, I'm just...
I think it's still pretty, yeah. I mean, 'cause it, even if it's permitted in a, I, okay, so if somebody comes into us for a permit and they wanna put fifty...
Oh, I agree.
You know, I, really it's helpful to say, sorry, you can only put twenty, right?
Yeah, and if they want more, they can go get a zoning variance, right?
I don't know if that's, that's a use, I don't know. So, on the bottom of page forty-five, where commercial campus development, B, the buildings should not be discernible from off-site. I think it would be better to say something about the buildings and the use should be screened from the... I, I, this discernible off-site is like...
Of course, they're gonna be discernible.
Right, I'm gonna send up, I'm gonna send up a, um...
Drone.
What, a drone, that's the word.
I just read you.
Well, I could, I could think of it then later.
It varies in the winter, you know, leaves on the trees.
Mm-hmm.
If you have permanent screening, that's different than when the leaves fall off the trees and you have a different view in the wintertime.
Right. So I think it should say they should, they can be, should be screened, but not, not discernible. That to me is impossible. Oh, and this is, I was getting snarky by the time I got to this, so, page fifty.
Oh, I'm in forty-eight.
Oh, go back to forty-eight.
Um, it's, let's see, where is it? Oh, C, restriction satisfactory to the planning board acting on the advice of the town attorney.
Oh, yeah. You should probably be acting on the advice of their consultants.
Yeah, consultant attorney or what, whatever.
Well, even just, I mean...
Yeah.
Yeah, to the planning board attorney.
Yeah.
Right. Fifty.
Yeah.
Okay, anything before fifty?
No.
Okay, to qualify for the building height limitation. I think that is to qualify for the building height, I've just changed it around in my head, to qualify for the building height allowance set forth. It's, um, because, because if you don't have those conditions, the limits don't apply, it's really to, it's, it's allowance. Or... And I've got all the attachment threes highlighted, uh... Oh, okay. Then I've got something on fifty, top of fifty-six, do you have anything with it?
No, I don't have any, I have sixty-one, that's my next one.
Um, top of fifty-six.
This is still, oh, no, this is the general...
Yeah, so when we're into, um, sales and storage for motor vehicles, so out, overnight outdoor storage of vehicles waiting servicing. You can have outdoor storage, so if, if a car gets impounded, it is not waiting for servicing, it's been impounded. So I think it should be, I think you should probably just delete awaiting servicing. And I don't know whether we want to, I, I would like to say appropriate screening or fencing may be required. Because you can have, you know, cars that are, been ruined, you know, junked, junked cars and stuff. You should, and it's not saying shall be required, but I'd like to say may be required by the approving authority. I was interested to see and hear that you have to have, um, screening for boats for the winter, and which we don't have, and you don't have anything about screening...
Cars.
Cars all over. And then I was like, I think I ran out of gas. Oh, you know, I got another one.
Oh, what page?
Sixty-two, you got something before that?
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one, all right.
Um, this is as to the review process, the pre-application, subject to the New York State Open Meetings Law, representative attendance from each municipal board or commission staff to play a role in approval and review of the development. What, it seems to me that if that's considered like a meeting, then you have to have publication.
Maybe what they're saying there is you can't have three members of the board attend.
I, I don't know what it means. Because that, that's...
I would, yeah, I would say take that thing back out.
I'm just, I'm trying to see.
The very top of the page.
That's one, yeah.
Oh, top, yeah.
It starts, um, K, the exit, facilitation and review process, 'cause you're not facilitating anything if you, if you have public notification.
The idea was to, I think, to flag, I think the idea was to avoid any town open meetings law problem, and we flagged it.
Yeah, well...
Yeah.
Unless, is there something in the law that allows pre-applications?
No, you can, you can have pre-application meetings. The concern was that, the idea for the pre-application meeting for AFFA is to get, basically, point people from each board that's gonna touch it, so they can kinda talk it out. basically point people from each board that's going to touch it, so they can kind of talk it out. But you can't, you know, once you get a quorum, if, if, if three members of the planning board show up, you know, you're going to run into an open meetings law.
Right, but I mean, same, you're, you're running into something.
Yeah, I get it, yeah, take it out.
Yeah, I think take it out, because I think, I actually think most of the board members that I know are pretty sensitive to, you know, three people.
I'm just saying, yeah, we, we instead would say one representative.
Yeah, that, that would be good.
Yeah.
No, it's, because you can, you can have two, two also.
Right.
You could have two, like, yeah, up, up to two.
Yep.
Depending on the size of the board.
Yeah. I'll, I'll play with that.
Interesting. Okay, so when you get to sixty-two, multifamily dwellings, I don't know why they took out your districts. Multifamily dwellings are defined later on in this chapter. Unless they're, say, want to say something, I don't know, I was trying to figure out, is that because you've got the senior floating zone or something, and that could be multifamily, I don't think so, because that's defined differently, so. I don't know. I think it really is a district.
Yeah, shouldn't speak district.
I was playing with the density factors, but I'm, I'm not smart enough to do that, and it's been set point seven five for a while, so I'm going to leave it. At the bottom of sixty-three, is it typo, when you get to sixty-four, on D, that's inserted, I think it's a typo, it should, I think it's just designed and landscaped. Um, sixty-four D, the insert. But because it looked like something might have been dropped, I didn't want to, I wanted to make sure that that wasn't.
An ant, something got dropped.
I think it's just an ant. And then in two, open space areas, D to two, and accepted by the town of Lewisboro, or may be owned by a common, there's something not right, quite there. I don't think there's a problem with what they're trying to do, I think it's a problem with the language.
Yeah.
Okay, then the next place that I might have any, and it's still probably, on page eighty-three.
I have, I have questions about the senior floating zone.
Yep, okay.
I thought there was an issue keeping it so with seniors above fifty-five.
We're, just let me go back.
It's just, it's just a general question.
Yeah, no, I mean, you can, there, you can have a, you can have age fifty-five, there's, you now have HUD regulations.
Oh, you have the HUD regulations they changed, okay, because.
Yeah, back in the day, well, that was.
Gerded children.
Yeah, right, yeah, no, yeah. So you can have age, you can have age restricted.
And do the HUD regulations, um, limit children that can come over and stuff like that?
I think, yeah, that what they do is, um, they limit age, and, and I'll look at this in a while.
Yeah, but maybe, maybe we should sort of.
Reference them?
Reference it, only, only because it's really, you know, specific to that.
Right.
But for. Because heritage children had that problem.
Yeah. They had to open it.
Yeah, open it up.
And then the schools had to deal with it. That's how they got there, yeah.
Yeah, so that's why. Okay, that's it for me.
Not so fast.
Eighty-three, you said?
Yeah, I'm on eighty-three. These are, again, just sort of cross-referencing things, so that the two-twenty, I, I think it's, some, just check those numbers, but then, when we get down to, so we're in special permits now. So.
I'm sorry, so on eighty-three.
Eighty-three, I think that, um, so we say section two-twenty dash thirty-three through forty-three point one, but we basically have it through, oops, can't read my own notes. I think it goes through forty-three eight, or if you just say forty-three, does it cover the whole branch? I don't know, but anyway. And then the next one, I think E and F should either be D and E, or it should be C, D and E, uh, something. I was tired. Eighty-four, the town board does have now, one A should read tier three solar energy systems. Okay, when we go to, so, private kennels goes away if we don't have any limits on dogs, but since we're recommending you do have a limit of five or six, then that one stay. I thought temporary stands are now in accessory use, so I think that can get deleted.
But, so, oh, because it's managed under getting a permit, you're saying?
No, it's just an accessory use, so there would be no, so.
Yeah, that's what I asked before.
Yeah, if you, if you have a house and you grow extra string beans and you want to sell them out front, you can do that.
Although they say. Well, the branches, I don't know. John, can you just sort of check that the temporary stands, what they want to do with it, whether they want a permit, um, you know?
I don't think they do.
Yeah, well, I just, yeah.
Yeah, I think the ranch needs a permit, but not the stand itself, you know?
Exactly, yeah.
But, yeah, check it, that's a good idea.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, so.
What the hell do they need or what?
Um, on page eighty-five, we have had a practice now of getting copies where determined appropriate, I would add, you know, the fire department.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You know, it's just, okay, that's just where we see it. Eighty-six, um. I don't know if we need to define it, but we say noise, fumes, vibration, or other characteristics, I would say, you know, traffic, light pollution, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that makes, traffic is hard, too, but I think, uh, light pollution.
Light pollution is definite, I don't know about traffic, but.
It's not bad, I just don't know how we manage.
Parking, I don't know, something, but, um, but I think light is important.
Okay, you have a club, and on page, I guess, on page ninety, you have the club issue.
Yeah, but before I'm there, on eighty-nine.
Oh.
I don't understand the word, the, the commas are wrong. Places of worship or religious instruction, including parish houses, private schools, colleges, does that mean that those are used for religious instruction, the private schools, colleges, museums, and art galleries? I, I.
Well, they're taking some of those out, right?
That was supposed to come out.
Places of worship, including parish houses, schools, museums, and art galleries.
Yeah, that's what it is.
So the next line down, places of worship.
Again, you.
Including parish houses, private schools, college, I, I think it's the problem of saying including, putting a comma before including parish houses, I think it's.
I see what you're talking about.
Places of worship. Or maybe you just say, get rid of the including, places of worship, comma, parish houses, private schools, colleges, or whatever you want to say there, but just.
Yeah, take out the including.
Take out the comma and, take out the including.
Yeah.
That makes me crazy. Well, I, I've tried to read that several times.
And then the, the next two lines under, need to match, right?
Yeah, same, need to match, right. Yeah. And then the number ninety is clubs.
Yeah, and follow the placement.
So. This is now recreation and fitness, outdoor facilities, so I think we have to.
Facilities, yeah.
So I think he just changed it to facilities.
Yeah.
And, and, but we also talked about just taking the definition of clubs out, which would help, but I think he's still calling it facilities. And then we go down to private kennels, so now we can, if we're going to leave it, and it's there. Oh. And then my next thing is ninety-six, what's your next page?
Well, the storage of contractor's equipment seems. In more than two years.
What page is that?
This is on ninety-two. But I think that's.
I think the thing is, the ZBA sort of wants, has, wants this, and.
Yeah.
Leave it alone. I get really confused now, when we get to page ninety-six, and the housing committee and housing administrator. And then they cross out all the middle incomes, so we have existing sort of grandfathered middle income units, and that's what the housing committee manage. The Westchester County manages AFFH units. So this kind of takes out all the middle income, I mean, granted, we're not building anymore, but those are still administered. And I think, I think.
How about putting existing middle income?
Fine, I mean, but they've got a, somebody has to decide who lives in them, right?
Right.
And then the AFFH, I think, is really done all through Westchester County, I don't think it's done, so this really is saying now, our committee in Lewisboro is doing AFFH, and takes away what they really do, which is the middle income.
Uh, because they don't do the AFFH stuff, because, does the county run that?
That's my understanding, it's run across everywhere.
Yeah, you have to request it, but.
You have to go through the county and get the, like, the marketing plan and all that stuff, yeah.
Right, so I think this whole, beginning on F, on page ninety-six.
Would they, they may take over the middle income stuff, too, anything that's regulated, the county.
Yeah, but the middle income is only, only, my understanding is it's only regulated by the town, it's not regulated by the county. So they don't, so it's.
Even though it's regulated, I think that the county, that's something the county would, but I haven't looked into it.
County might have taken it over, I went and looked on the website that described what the housing, but that website might not have been updated for a while, so, um.
Yeah, because I.
But somehow this whole thing has to be, that has to be fact-checked and cleared up.
And see what the housing committee does, and see whether in fact the county would look to managing it.
So, and it's, it's all the way through, because there's, I believe there is middle income still, I don't know.
Because they manage affordable housing stuff.
They manage affordable housing, but I, you know, this whole middle income thing was, if you're a volunteer.
Ah, okay, maybe that's very town specific.
It's very town specific, it's if you, if you're in the fire department, and if you're in the, um.
Yeah.
I mean, one of the people who worked at the post office was in the middle income thing, and.
Okay, that, that's like real old.
It's, it's very, it's very old, and it's very, um, town-specific.
Yeah. I think, I think Janet's right, though, because the county runs all this other stuff.
And then, oh.
One oh two had, oh, I'm sorry, one oh two has a definition of structure again, coming back in.
Ah, good.
This is a structure for purposes of this chapter only.
Oh, okay.
Which is the, um, you know, at the end.
This is then.
For purposes of the wireless communication.
Okay, so then this is the right location for that definition?
Strictly for this.
Yeah, okay, so then the other structure is the one that's, okay, now I understand.
Oh, and then I, yeah, um, on page one oh five, C one, you know, they say these things within exclude, you know, not installed wholly within a principle, but including baby monitors, heart monitors, garage door openers, I'm sitting there thinking, you know, what about routers, modems, I mean, if somebody wants to put a community hotspot wifi in there, it seems, so it seems to me, you know, that's not entirely within a building, but, but I just kind of, and then I'm starting to say, we've got ring doorbells, we've got, you know, they're. It's okay, I just don't know what to do about it. I think it might be enough to say, well, I'm exempting baby monitors, and people will extrapolate to ring cameras.
Those are illustrative only, I mean, they're not exclusive.
Right, but the reason I bring it up is that these things are all inside, but once you get to a ring camera, or if you put up a wifi, if Lily's, or if the front of this building, or the library puts up a hotspot, it seems to me it should be allowed. But I don't, I'm not technical enough about the terminology, escrab. But I mean, it's sort of, don't you think it's, we shouldn't be, okay, you got my point, nevermind. But I mean, it's sort of, don't you think it's, we shouldn't be, okay, you got my point, nevermind.
Bounded by walls.
Because I think we should have more wireless hotspots open to anybody in our town, but that's, we don't have them. And I, oop. Oh, yes, so then bed and breakfast. I referred to this a little bit later, earlier. I'm on page one forty.
What about one thirty-five? You have professional offices in residential districts. Are all those sections in accordance with each other?
Oh, this is the thing that's a hundred feet behind-
And this is all?
This is all has to be limited with a hundred feet of the, of the zoning change. So I'm thinking this is not as meaningful as anything.
No, bed and breakfast.
Yeah. So this says bed and breakfast in residential districts, so if- I just think you cross back off that in residential districts that you have there. Because when you get to three on the next page, it says non-residential and- I'm sorry, one forty. So the more I read it, the more I think you just take out the in-residential districts. And in part, that's because on the next page, it says, if it's in a non-residential district, so it's clearly part of the whole. And earlier, when we said it's multifamily, oh, so I'm now at one forty-eight. Before, we had multifamily dwellings, and I said, we probably should go back to multifamily districts. That's because now we've got some, a section called multifamily dwellings that's the R-two-F-seven-point-five districts. And I don't, I know we put this in specifically to allow that one mandia. I don't know why we wouldn't expand this to R-dash-two-F-dash-ten districts, which is the ten thousand square feet instead of the seventy-five hundred square feet, and put them both in. I don't know. And again, the density unit, I don't really know. Okay. My next one is on one fifty-one. The waiver of the public hearing and the timing of the public hearing. I think this timeframe may be extended by mutual consent of the applicant and the planning board. We, we often do, you know-
During the meeting.
Yeah, we do it right in the middle of a meeting, and it's minuted. I think we're okay, but so I think the written should get rid of. The public hearing, I think, and Kirsten, you can correct me here on F. The planning board shall mail notice of said hearing to the applicant and shall give public notice in a newspaper. Isn't that the applicant that should give the-
Yeah, we just changed that.
Notice?
For planning board, it was the applicant that would mail the notice.
Right, so on one fifty-one, the bottom in F there, it's the applicant should give the public notice. It used to be, we paid for it, but, no, we, no, yeah, they pay, they do it now, right? Yeah, we used to do it, now they do it.
So you're talking about publication is what we changed.
Right.
And mailing, so it says, the planning board shall mail notice of said hearing to the applicant, at least ten days, no?
The applicant's doing that.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's something screwy with that, that should be reviewed.
And it shouldn't be to the applicant?
No, it shouldn't be to the applicant. It's like, yeah.
I mean, well, I know you do provide them with the notice that-
The appropriate orders.
You provide them with the notice they ought to use, but then they have to go and publish it.
Oh, so maybe that's, it's like a combination of those two.
Right, yeah, it's so- So, it's just, again, this is sort of, it's not a policy change, it's just reflecting what we do. And then you have a sentence in here twice. I think on page one fifty-two, I think it's under any permit, not under activity permit. Because that, I think of an activity permit as a wetland permit. So I think it's under any permit issued, the applicant. It's just a typo thing. On page one fifty-five. Procedure, I, I don't think it should say in either paper or written form. I think it's in, we require both paper and electronic form. So it's the required number of copies in paper and electronic form to the planning board. On page one sixty-five, we've got a table-
I'm sorry, just on the back, do you really want it in paper?
We, yes, we need-
We want both.
We want both. We need, she needs some for the files, and occasionally, there's a planning board member who wants paper, so-
Enough, we have to make a referral to the building inspector. I have that copy already, or the fire district.
I'm sorry, where were you?
I'm on one sixty-one. Again, it's the shared parking spaces, C.
Yep.
And it says that the planning board may require the unimproved reserve area be set aside and meet full requirements, blah, 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 and shall not be unless there is contractual obligation to the satisfaction of the town attorney.
So, one sixty-five. Rumors and rumors or borders? I mean, first, I don't think we have any rumors or borders. I mean, we have, we have the B and B thing, but I don't know that we have any, that we would ever know that there's a rumor or border. I, I don't know.
Also, you have the professional office or home occupation issue, too.
Yeah.
That's on the list, too.
Right. And that would then say that minimum off, so if I work from home, no, I don't need to have-
You don't, because you're not supposed to have people working for you, but they have to figure that out.
What section, the fifty-six D, do you remember what that was?
I can look.
Because that might be able to link back.
Dash five-six D.
It's like, I, it's like you said, they have to flush that out a little more.
I don't think, so-
I think that relates to-
It's not in the code that we have here. I'd have to go look it up in the zoning code, let's see. Fifty-six has a schedule of off-street parking requirements where they have yeah, rumors of borders. It's very similar to this table.
It's the same table.
Yeah. Okay.
That's a check, I gotta-
Like you said, like, yeah, for the professional services, that is, is like, non-residential service or something, if that's what we're going to require parking spots, right?
Yeah, we're just, I, I think we got a, you know, I think the approach is right, that we've sort of been batting around, which is, okay, town board, tell us what you're really trying to get with this.
Right.
And then we don't have to talk about it tonight.
On one sixty-six.
Mm-hmm.
Clubs.
Yep, that's where I think, I think we go to recreational facilities.
A recreational facility has what they need. Clubs, now we're talking for not-for-profit, like Boy Scouts.
Right, so, yeah.
Boat.
I think if we just change it to recreational, yeah.
We took that restaurant?
Because they define fast food and something else restaurants. I figured that out at-
Oh, full-service.
Full-service and, and so on page, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Full-service with more than ten seats, so we don't know what it needs for a full-service restaurant that has less than, or a limited-service carryout.
That is called, that is called, that's the other restaurant thing. Here, that's down, unlimited service, carryout with ten or fewer seats.
Right, so-
Those are the two choices you can be.
But let's say you have eight.
That's less than ten.
You are a limited, by definition, you are a limited service. Even if you serve a gourmet meal.
You have to have ten seats.
With, if you're only of eight seats.
With more than ten seats.
Then it's the full-service.
Yeah.
Then it's full-service.
Does it change that much? Oh, yeah.
Puzzle. Okay, but on the next one down, so I don't get the difference between if you're a dental or medical, you have to have five spaces for each practitioner, but-
Bed office.
If you're in a residential district, you need
Two.
Four spaces. The first, the first row in the table above. So, it could be right. I just don't- I don't know what, I don't know. It, it seems-
But if you have it as a professional office in a residential district in your home, you only need two.
It's, yeah, so so I don't know what people do, okay. Nursery school, school or nursery school. So in the, in the actual special permit thing, they say a minimum of one off-street parking for every two hundred square feet of floor area. And here it says, one space per employee. So again, I, I don't know what the right one is, but, you know, maybe we go to Jan. Jan! Tell us about the parking. But that, it's just- Get in there. Okay. That's all I had there. So then, this table, attachment three, which maybe should be attachment five or something, I don't know how to do that, is the next one, and I don't really have too many changes. The first thing is there was a special use permit, which I think is basically, the SP is basically special use permit, planning board.
Right.
Then there should be a special, there is a special use permit town board, and there should be a special use permit zoning board now.
Right.
Added. So I was going to leave, so they didn't have to change too much, leave SP as the planning board and make SPZ the zoning board. So you don't have to put SPP in every one of these. So, down there under ranching, I think that's now, I'm sorry, on page two of this. Ranching, I think, is zoning. Private kennels are zoning. That's right, so, and then we get to this temporary stands for the sale and display. And we have it still as a special permit.
Right.
But it's also an allowed use, so this A says it's an accessory use. So I think it could be deleted from the zoning code, or they have to, or if they want to keep it as a permit, then you change that.
Yeah, that's a question for them. I can't imagine they want that to be a permit or a-
I can't imagine it. And then there's two more ZBA special permit things. One is the temporary storage of- One is the temporary storage of contractor's equipment, and that is I didn't see that anywhere in here, and then the second one is that whole thing about putting an accessory building across the street or on a lot next to, and that's also the, um, PBZ.
Yeah. SPZ.
I'm sorry, SPZ, a P, yes, S-
Yeah, got it.
I put it wrong in here. And that's it, that's all I got.
That's all I have, too. Aren't you happy we read it?
Not yet.
No, but we read it, I think.
Yeah, it's like-
Oh, no, this is cruel.
Yeah, it's just like-
It, no, and, and when you do it, when you've read it once or twice yourself, you, it's really hard to, it starts, yeah.
The other thing was from taking, is the, the source for all this work, with the materials from the committee, you know, so it was like plugging in and then going back and just trying to make sure the formatting was, thank God, I, Christian from my office is able to, like, but-
No, it's like-
Yeah.
All right, well-
Yeah, I mean, it's one thing doing one at a time.
Right, yeah.
You know, but when you're doing the whole thing, your eyes start to crawl.
Okay, do we want to vote on the minutes of October 15th?
Sorry, just one other thing, just for accessory use or accessory structure, um, is defined, and I, I'm just trying to look it up, I don't know what exact section it is, defined as a use supplement to the primary use of the building, so if you have a vacant lot that's yours, you can't put an accessory building or structure onto it unless it's accessory to the use of the property, and if the property isn't, like, you couldn't put a pool on a vacant lot if it's two separate lots.
Because there's no primary residence.
Residents.
Right, but that's where this whole thing with the going to the zoning board, so somebody had their own property, and across the street, they owned another lot, and they were, they went to the zoning board and got permission to put a garage that didn't have a principal you, thing on the, on the other lot. And I don't remember if they had to tie it to the first lot in any way, but-
They did.
They did.
So that's go, you go to zoning to deal with that.
Yes, you go to zoning.
Okay, that's what I just remember reading that in the code, right? I can remember how that all pulls out.
Allowing accessory use without a project.
Yeah, that's just basic.
Yeah, so then you, if you want to, you go to zoning to do, all right, so that's how that runs through, okay. Yeah, I remember reading it, I was confused, so.
Okay, what do we think of the minutes of October 15th, 2024?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
A little enthusiasm.
I'm gonna say our next meeting date is November 19th.
Next week, do it again.
Next week, yes, and so, um-
It's probably shorter than that.
Yes, a motion to adjourn the meeting at 10:45.
So moved.
Want a second?
Oh, second, sorry.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
That, I was looking at that clock, that's wrong, right, that's, it's still an hour off.
It's still an hour off, and it's a couple minutes early, but we'll, I mean, late, but we're-